And a call to order, we have a roll call. Could we have, we please have the roll call, please? We have a quorum, that's what we have.
Yes, Mayor. Roll call. Mayor Sticks.
Here.
Mayor Protem Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Thank you, Chief Deputy City Clerk. Welcome, everyone, to the November 12th, 2024, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Will you please say the pledge for us?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome, community, honorable council. Please rise as you are able and face our flag in the rear of the room here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, wonderful. And we have no presentations and no commission reports, so we will move on to general public comment. And just a reminder to everyone, this is when we hear from you about items that are not on the agenda, so we cannot discuss them. We can agendize them for the future. So let's begin with Ron Solarsino, and then Jolene Catlett, and then Teal Rowe.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. I am Ron Solarsino. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And I just wanted to come by today to mention a couple of things that are coming up at the library, and one of which is that we are happy to be renewing our partnership, or continuing our partnership, rather, with the Workforce Development Board of Ventura County. The Workforce Development Board is excited to announce the return of their weekly series that encourages job seekers to take the first steps towards a fulfilling career. Ventura County Works is the name of this particular program. And once again, they're going to be offering one-on-one career coaching at the Ojai Library. The coaching is free, registration is not required, and drop-ins are welcome. Ventura County Works staff are going to be available at the library every Thursday afternoon from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Coaching sessions are going to cover topics that are essential for job seekers in the 21st century, including professional branding to promote yourself in the workplace, digital literacy, emotional intelligence, networking, interviewing, and more. So we were doing this for a while some months ago, took a little break, and now they're back. So just, yeah, stop on by, we'd be happy to have folks in for that program. The other thing I wanted to mention, this has been a long time coming, but we are finally ready to launch our pilot program at the library where we are going to be lending out electric leaf blowers. So we have a limited number of them, but this pilot project is going to allow us to, basically, it is a kit, a big bin, that contains the blower itself, a battery pack, instructions, like all that kind of stuff together. You borrow it with your library card, you just need to have a card in good standing with a verified mailing address, and you can come by the Ojai Library to check one of those out. Again, only a limited number right now, so we're sort of soft-launching it, but we're excited to get this off the ground and see how it goes. So again, stop by the library, visit our website for more information, and if you have any questions about what's going on out there, you can reach out to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ron. Next, we have Jolene Catlett, then Teal Rowe, and then Michelle Thomas.
Thank you for having me tonight. On Thursday of this week, I had sent out emails to all council, and the only person that got back to me was Ms. Sticks. Thank you, Mayor Sticks. I wanted to share my email, as I don't feel like it's been heard from my council. I'm a lifelong resident of Ojai and a mother of two daughters in the local gymnastics program. I wanted to inquire if council members have themselves reached out directly to either the Ojai Valley Gymnastics Parents Group or any of the staff of the gymnastics program, particularly Vicky or Coach Stacy. Or has all the information on this issue solely been provided by Mr. Davis, who is a newcomer, and he's the one who seems to know the least about our program and how it runs? I truly believe that Matt Davis does not quite understand the program, and he's feeding council incorrect information. I would hope that you look into these issues for yourselves and ask the appropriate questions. I would trust that you would want to hear from multiple parties and perspectives, as your community is very clearly upset about how things are being handled by Mr. Davis. If I, as a council member, were to encounter an issue, I would want to gather my own information, especially since most of you probably are removed from the workings and logistics of the program. Inquiring to veteran staff, the parents group, who have all reached out to you many times, and other staff at the recreation center seem like a good starting point. As of early last week, no one had reached out to any of the staff or the parents group. Our community has spoken. You are our council members, and this is an important issue that impacts the youth of this community. Ojai has a program that's benefiting hundreds of youth every eight weeks in and out of city limits, and I would expect greater effort from our elected officials. Madam Mayor, it's my understanding that you have a meeting set up with the parents group. Thank you very much. As for the remaining council members, I would hope that you do your due diligence to investigate the issue from multiple perspectives and not simply from the mouth of Mr. Davis, who I feel is making a mess of the rec center and losing the trust of their patrons. Thank you.
Thank you, JoJo.
Mayor, could I respond very briefly? I have reached out to the parents group, had a half-an-hour conversation with one of the parents, and will be meeting at the rec gym on Friday. So I don't know exactly if that information is traveling back to you, but I have done both of those things. So, and I look forward to actually seeing the program.
And I also have a meeting scheduled on Thursday with the parents group, and I have been in other conversations as well. So we are, we hear you, we are on it, and we care very much.
I'm going to say that I have two granddaughters in the gymnastics program, and I know a lot of the parents. And in fact, Skylar, who wrote that great letter to the editor that was in the Friday paper, was at my, at the birthday party yesterday. And I got, you know, a lot of the parents that came to the party are involved, so I've got my pulse on the situation.
And Mayor, if I could add before we go off, the council and staff are also working diligently towards a full, comprehensive public discussion of this subject at the special city council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, November 19th, here at 6:00 p.m. The agenda for that meeting is expected to be out tomorrow, or perhaps Thursday. It will include a detailed evaluation of the gymnastics program, concerns and opportunities for the future by staff and with, in consultation with the council and the community, and the staff is working hard on a resolution that should achieve success. So stay tuned for that. Agenda coming out tomorrow, the next day, 6:00 p.m., Tuesday, November 19th, here at Ken Hall for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Next, we have Teal Rowe, then Michelle Thomas, and then Tina Ave.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff, and thank you for the time. I gave Weston a copy of what I'm going to go over this evening. And I mean this comment with all due respect. I ask that you not pass the nature ordinance until you give the public proof and steps you intend to take in order to enforce what you propose. I ask that you console the public with the exact steps intended toward accountability.
I'm sorry, Teal, this is on the consent calendar? Can you hold that comment?
It's for chapter one through five through the nature ordinance, not five through 10.
But the nature ordinance is on the consent calendar? So can you?
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Michelle Thomas.
Hi, I'm Michelle Thomas, Ojai. I emailed you today, not you, chief, but I should have, an evacuation study done by the city of Ashland, Oregon. A local citizen actually emailed it to me. I reviewed it. I am horrified. There are a lot of parallels for our town. Now, the study's long, it's done by a professional company. You could fast-forward to the last, you know, to the conclusions, and then you'll probably want to go back, but please look at it. As we know what's happened in Camarillo, we know we have ingress and egress issues here all the time. We don't know how many people we're going to be evacuating, because we don't know how many people are here from day to day. There's a lot of issues brought up in this study that I think we need to look at. I'm going to call, once you do, for a professional evacuation study to be done. Yes, I think the county could share the cost, and should, but that's another issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Tina Ave, then Alex Mooney, and then Jimmy Garo.
Hi, I'm Tina Ave. I'm the secretary for the Ojai Valley Gymnastics Group, Parents Group. I know we're having a meeting next Tuesday regarding the future of the gymnastics program, and this week, we are meeting with some of you council members one-on-one. I appreciate that. We still don't have meetings on the books for a few of you. If you'd like to meet with us, you can contact Susan Malkin. When a good time would be, we have really flexible schedules to meet with you. I'd also like to mention, we'd love to have a presentation spot on the agenda. I know it's coming out soon, since part of the agenda is directly about the parents group. I'd like to say one more thing about the gymnastics program in the Recreation Department, and there seems to be a big push to get rid of the competitive team aspect of the Ojai Valley gymnastics program, but I want to say a word of support for keeping the competition. Competition is actually necessary for participants to progress into higher-level gymnastics. Starting at level three, athletes cannot get to more difficult skills unless they are adjudicated at a gymnastics meet. And competitive gymnastics can be found not only in private gyms, but in many recreation departments across the country. I've personally spoken to five such departments, three of them in California in the past few weeks, and there are more I could have reached out to, I just didn't have the time. There is something about a competitive team in a rec setting, though, that offers a different experience than one in a private gym. For our family, this is why we chose Ojai Valley gymnastics. Cost was certainly a factor, but we liked the fact that we didn't have to sign our child's life away in the gym. Other programs require gymnasts to spend 15 to 20 hours a week in the gym in order to compete. Ojai Valley gymnastics does that in seven and a half hours, and that includes the time it takes to take down their equipment. Girls compete at high levels, often atop the medals platform against gyms that are requiring many more hours of time. In this way, the gymnastics program in Ojai encourages balance in school, home, and gym life, including giving P.E. credit at Nordoff High School. This program is also known in local gymnastics circles as one in which the athletes actually look like they're having fun. This is solely due to the warm, family environment fostered by Vicky Hollingsworth and Stacy Pergson. There is nothing quite like this program. It's working here, let's keep it going for the untold benefits to the youth of the Ojai Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Next, we have Alex Mooney, then Jimmy Garo, and then Dean Wiger.
Hi, Mayor Sticks and City Council. Thank you for listening tonight. I've lived in Ojai for about 30 years, I raised my son here. Every summer, our dogs, cats, and animals shake with pure terror and hide under our beds each Fourth of July. Every summer, the temperatures climb higher, the brush gets dryer, and the risk of fire increases. A group of us would like to propose that the city move to put on a spectacular drone show instead of fireworks for the Fourth of July. It would be much quieter for animals, less traumatic for both animals and veterans with PTSD, the fire risk would be reduced greatly, and the show could vary from year to year instead of being a variety of the same show year after year. In fact, the event could be made free to the public and become a true Ojai community event. The Ventura County Fair and many other places around the county, or country, I mean, have switched from dangerous and loud fireworks to drone shows, and the feedback was fantastic. We currently have a website. It is usofthevalley.com, with a petition you can sign. Again, that is usofthevalley.com. I ask that the city and Ojai community to consider making the change from fireworks to drone shows this year and years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we have Jimmy Garo, then Dean Wiger, and then David Mendoza.
Hi, Mayor Sticks and City Council. My name's James Garo, I'm Jimmy Garo, and I'm here in support of the Fourth of July initiative. I'm not necessarily against, you know, the traditional fireworks, but I am in favor of moving away from them and doing the drone thing. You know, for the sake of the many households that have pets, including mine. I suppose if I didn't have a pet for the last five or six years, this wouldn't have been caught, drawn to my attention, but it's, I just can't imagine what everybody else is going through, because I've seen my dog, there's just no way around it. The drone displays that I've witnessed are awe-inspiring, and they just, it seemed like it would have a little impact on the environment. I never even thought of that until recently. Air pollution and noise pollution, and I'm sure there's disruption to the natural wildlife as well. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next, we have Dean Wiger, then David Mendoza, and then Robin Gerber.
Hello. Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me the time this evening to enlighten you with my opinions. I don't know, Weston, did you hand out the, okay, cool. Anyway, my name is Dean Wiger, I'm a resident of Ojai, and I'm speaking tonight as a concerned citizen that there isn't a Plan B option for the Cabin Village site selection, Alternative Public Works. I arrived at my concern after attending the planning commission last week, where 23 members of the public spoke in opposition of the public works site and the many challenges that were brought up by the planning commission that we need to be overcome, namely parking, sidewalks on Montgomery, possible site contamination, grading and ADA challenges, along with putting at risk individuals amongst neighbors for safety concerns. I'd like to point out that there is an alternative site consisting of three combined properties on Bryant Place that was originally on the Board of Realtors selections that I feel is a better fit to the city and its impact to residential neighborhoods. See Attachment A in your packet. It has many advantages over the public works yard, which I have outlined in the handout to you tonight with visual aids to get a picture of the concept. First of all, the Dignity Moves model, I overlaid on, actually, my son overlaid that for me, on the site selection therewith, showing that there's ample parking, as well as the model does fit perfectly. Item number two was omitted from the original Board of Realtors list. You can see that it's on that list in Attachment B. Proximity to public transport with a trolley stop on the adjacent street with Whispering Oaks, which is on Attachment C. It's close to other R3 zoning, so it's not a burden on low-density residential, and only two lots from the recently approved Cabrillo project with a similar zone change. The fire department has great access and public utilities are on site. And then I've included for you the original listings that I could find on the internet just as a public citizen of both nine, all three lots. 914, which is over a half an acre, it's .6 acres, 100 by 260, which is a flat lot easily for building. 915, which is, has a storage facility plus a small building that could be accessed for services for the Cabin Village site. And then finally, 917, which is an 1,100-square-foot house that sold for almost $1 million. It's quite a nice house that could be used for resident steward and support staff. In conclusion, I would like to remind the city manager Harvey of his commitment to the administrative report, on the administrative report from August 27th, to provide the city and council members with a cost model for this project before the end of the calendar year of '24, and a method for forecasting the cost to the taxpayers for maintaining the services and maintenance and any budget shortfalls after the grant funds run out. And finally, to urge the city staff to engage with the California Housing and Community Development Department to find out definitively if sites outside of city limits can be included in this grant, and if so, to engage with the county as our partner in this upping endeavor moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dean. Next, we have David Mendoza, and then Robin Gerber.
Good evening, mayor, council. I've spoken to you before about this. My name's Dave Mendoza, I live on South Signal Street. We all agree we need to have a solution to help our Ojai homeless. I just don't think this is the right one. I have 30 years' experience in the fire service, retired as a captain. A large percentage of our calls are to the homeless population. I've tried to use that experience to kind of educate you on what the problems are, but you guys don't seem to be listening to what I'm trying to tell you. I'm here today to give you some concrete data as to how a permanent shelter doesn't fit in any residential area, and to help you change your decision. I went to the sheriff's office this last week down at 800 South Victorian Ventura, and I requested calls for service for the last three years to the Ojai City Hall campus. So again, these calls are calls the sheriff's officers had to respond to, to the City Hall campus, tent town, and the area behind you here. The types of calls the sheriffs responded to are vandalism, trespassing, warrant services, keeping the peace, disturbing the peace, abandoned vehicles, noise disturbances, shots heard fired, two of those, brandishing weapons, indecent exposure, illegal entry, battery theft, and narcotics activity. I don't know if you guys know this, but there's marijuana growing right, back here right now on city property. Again, some of the, some of your residents probably need this, but is that what you want when you're also treating people for narcotics behavior? In 2022, you had 21 calls for service. That's for, 21 calls to this location, that's before you had Tent Town. Last year, you had 75 calls for service, you know, a huge increase there. This year alone, and we're not at the end of the year, you've already had 157 calls for service. Of those calls that I listed, those were just to this site. I know not all the residents are responsible for these issues, but you can't ignore what these numbers prove. If this project stays where it is, or is moved permanently to the city yard, we, the neighbors, will be affected the most. But make no mistake, so will our entire community. If you have a downtown business, if you like to play at the park with your child, or you just want to go downtown and shop or have dinner, you'll be impacted by this plan. If you have doubts, ask your friends, ask your family, ask your neighbors, who are sheriffs, police officers, or firefighters. Ask them if they think it's a good idea to place a homeless, drug, alcohol, mental health facility in a neighborhood, sharing a fence with Libby Park, within the downtown area. I hope you guys can change your decision, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Robin Gerber.
Chief, Trina, a question. Since the tent town and since Ames has come in with the St. Francis Challenge, how many calls roughly have you been getting? I mean, how many, roughly, if you know?
I don't want to give you a number. I don't want to.
Okay.
It would be a complete estimation, but I can tell you that the numbers have gone down, and there's many reasons for that, that I won't get into here, because I think it deserves a more detailed explanation, but I can tell you that with the security having been there and Ames having been there, we obviously have had some problem individuals, but those individuals have been removed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, next, we have Robin Gerber, and a question for council. Normally, we just take 10 comments at the beginning and move on. We have six more, so is council all right for finishing? Okay, so after, after Robin, we have Mick Froelich, and then Debbie Robertson. Oh, Rubenstein, sorry. Robin?
Hi, I'm Robin Gerber, and live here in Ojai. Mayor and members of the council, I'm here to talk about the, our beloved Recreation and Parks Department, and yes, I know there's a meeting coming up next week, but you need to think about what is going to be talked about in that meeting, because gymnastics isn't enough, or we're going to be playing whack-a-mole here. How is it that just gymnastics came up? I don't know, we don't know anything. We don't know anything, because you all had a private, closed meeting, which I'm not sure how you all consented to, although I know Matt is very convincing. But how he convinced you that there would be a lawsuit when no one even knew what you were going to be talking about, I don't know. That's illegality, and the DA is going to handle it. But it was wrong. And what's right now is to involve the public in this most public facing of departments. I mean, what department in the city has more of the public that's engaged with parks and recreation? Walking our dogs, taking our grandkids, being in the programs. So I'm asking that you please broaden the agenda for next Tuesday, because there evidently are many programs, if you don't know this, that are being discussed to be cut back or cut away completely. Tots, horseback riding, yoga, all kinds of things we all love. I am not sure why our new city manager is not willing to be more transparent. The idea that this is somehow programs that don't get enough kids from the city, we have a sphere of influence that we all understand, because we have lived here. And this is what newcomers need to be educated about, both himself and this man who he has hired, who doesn't appear to be very good at communicating to the public. We all, we would have highways running through this city if it weren't for the sphere of influence. We would have environmental degradation like no one can imagine if it weren't for the sphere of influence. So we want the kids from Miners Oaks and Casita Springs in the upper Ojai to come to our rec department, just like we want our own kids to come. So please broaden that agenda next Tuesday. We need to look at the whole rec department, and we need that rec commission to be in place, so we know we have volunteers from the public looking at the rec department. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next, we have Mick Froelich, and then Debbie Rubenstein, and then Jesse Austin.
City Council and Mayor, thanks for letting me speak. I wanted to say a few things following the planning commission meeting last week, as we're about to nominate a new planning commissioner amid site approval process. After a poorly-prepared sales pitch by the city staff last week to try and rush this project into approval, the city manager and staff have continued to act dishonestly and severely lacking in transparency. First and foremost, I want to emphasize that the decision to place the Cabin Village in our neighborhood has been done without any meaningful input from the people who live there, a fact I find problematic, as they continue to tell the public and the planning commission that they've thoroughly vetted the site. Public comments at every turn seem to be falling on deaf ears. Ojai is made up of people who've chosen to live here because of its quiet, close-knit nature. Many of us have invested our time, our energy, and most of our resources into billing our families, friendships, neighborhoods, and small businesses. The idea the city can ignore all that for a few million dollars to build a cabin village in the heart of a low-density neighborhood, something Dignity Moves has admitted they've never done, and within blocks of our main attractions, Libby Park and the Avenue, without so much as a conversation with all of those affected, is an oversight, at best, and a violation of trust, at worst. Building this shelter without listening to the concerns and suggestions of the neighbors is a missed opportunity, sends a message that our voices do not matter. This isn't just a building, it's about the future of our economy. We've begun canvassing the small businesses between Ventura Street and Montgomery Street as well, to find there is little to no support for the city council and city manager's decision. I believe the city manager and staff are also suggesting that the budget to run this project in perpetuity is only $500,000 per year, a fact that the state has proven otherwise. According to an article in the LA Times, November 9th, the Coalition on Homelessness has determined the average cost per night to sustain a permanent shelter is $139 per person per evening. LA is going to attempt to only budget $116 per night per person and hope for the best. That amount comes to $1.27 million per year to run our Cabin Village. So someone needs to do better homework, frankly. In closing, I'd ask you to reconsider this decision. Explore other options that involve genuine community input and long-term planning. Real dollars and cents budgeting to determine the cost of this project in perpetuity, as the state has shown in the last year that grant monies will not continue to come indefinitely. Just ask Santa Barbara, Alameda, and Los Angeles. The citizens deserve a better solution that's well-thought-out, sustainable, and sensitive to everyone in the town, not just those with the loudest voices or the most in need.
Yeah, ask the speaker. Nick? You know, I was at the planning commission meeting, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I did notice that most of the speakers left maybe halfway through, three-fourth through. So I want to know, I'm asking if you watched the end of the meeting, where Dignity Moves did speak to the fact that they put these types of projects in residential neighborhoods?
No. What they said was not in a low-density residential neighborhood. If you look on their website, yeah, I was, I was listening virtually while I was driving home in hectic traffic.
Okay, thank you, that's all, I don't want to, like, just want to make sure.
What they said is it's been in multi-use or multi-residential zones, but never in a neighborhood where a homeless issue didn't exist prior.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mick. Next, we have Debbie Rubenstein, then Jesse Austin, then Renee Roth.
Good evening, members of council and neighbors. Going off of that, because I wasn't going to speak about that, but I do agree that it should not be in a neighborhood, and Ojai being four and a half square miles, the city of Ojai, where they want to put it, I find pretty ridiculous also, because it's going to be in somebody's backyard, and, you know, I just think that maybe we should go outside of the box. So, and because the people that do get kicked out are on the streets, you know, doing not-so-good things. do get kicked out are on the streets, you know, doing not-so-good things. So, and there's not a plan for them either. So once they do get booted out for bad behavior, you know, there's no program or nothing set up for what happens to them after. So they're just around Ojai here, up to no good, some of them. But what I really wanted to talk about was the, number one, the stop signs on Drown. I find it to be very dangerous because of how Drown is situated, where you have a part of it where the stop sign is back, and then the other, you know, then you have them at all the different corners. So somebody making a left-hand turn from, let's say, the signal area, and then somebody going straight, it's almost happened to me when I was making a left-hand turn that somebody at the stop sign almost hit me, and I've seen it happen a couple times. I just find that to be a very dangerous stop sign issue there. So hopefully, something can be done about that. All the other ones are fine because they're all aligned, where that one is not. Then I want to talk about how dark it is at night in this town and down all the side streets. It is so dark that you can't see anybody. You know, there's people on bikes, there's people, you know, I, and some of them don't have lights on at night, and I've had this issue where my husband's had to say, Deb, there's a biker up there, you know, because I can't see. There's no, when you're driving down the avenue downtown on the right-hand side, there's no lights at all, no streetlights, you know, where on the left-hand side there is. But, but it's very, very dark, and so many of the side streets are so dark. There's no streetlights whatsoever. And I think that's a really important issue, especially with all the kids riding their e-bikes and everything else. The last thing is the downtown crosswalks. I think they need to be lit up more. I think they need to be more defined and have the blinkers, you know, because again, I think that's a really big issue. So, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Next, we have Jesse Austin, then Renee Roth, and then William Wierich.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jesse Austin. I'm the vice president of the Ojai Valley Gymnastics Parents Group. First of all, I just want to second what Robin said. I've emailed you a request to expand the agenda to the rec department in general. Haven't heard back on that. I just wanted to make a brief comment tonight first to thank those of you who have responded to our request for individual meetings. Mayor Styx, Councilwoman Rule, and Councilwoman Ling, thank you. Mayor Proton Whitman and Councilwoman Fransina, really appreciate if you would respond at your earliest convenience so that we can meet with you. We would also like for you all to respond to our request for a 20-minute presentation spot at the November 19th meeting. We understand that you will be receiving a staff report that night from Ojai staff, Ojai city staff regarding the gymnastics program. But given that the information you've been provided in the past has been inaccurate, we feel it's imperative for us to be given an opportunity to present you with factual information. It seems crazy to me that the Ojai Valley Gymnastics Parents Group has had to spend countless hours over the past month combing over 20-plus years of records and having meetings and emailing and texting daily to defend our ability to continue giving money and equipment to the city of Ojai. When I was asked to join this board, I was told one meeting a month. Honestly, it has never been so difficult for me to give away my money and my time. In your decision-making next week, please consider why our efforts are being rejected by the city and why our love for this program and the community are being treated as a liability instead of as an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Next, we have Renee Roth, then William Wierich, and then Andrew Stasi.
Good evening, everybody. This is interesting. I grew up in Assland, Oregon. The woman who was talking about the evacuation plan, maybe that's why I'm concerned and very concerned about fire preparedness, because I grew up in that little town in southern Oregon. It's got an exit up here, an exit down there, and a big old freeway behind it, and big old mountains behind it. Maybe that's why I love Ojai. Maybe that's why I'm here. So at yesterday's press conference on the mountain fire, Ventura County Fire Chief Dustin Gardner reminds us, "Give each other grace. Take care of your neighbors. Remember, Ventura is strong. The 805 is resilient." And I want to thank the Ojai Valley News for putting that in the paper. It was a reminder, and it brought me to tears because I remember buying those t-shirts for the Thomas Fire out in front of Nordoff that we are resilient and we can do this. So after this, oh, and by the way, I want to congratulate Andy Gilman. Congratulations to Andy Gilman. It looks like he is the new mayor-to-be. It was a tough election, and I just want to say, after this difficult election, we must come together, united, in a civil, respectful, and inclusive approach that serves all of Ojai. No hidden agendas, just transparent, community-driven goals that support every resident, not just a precious few. To bridge your divides, we need open dialogue and a commitment and discussion about our shared challenges. One of the biggest threats we face is wildfire. The recent mountain fire was a big reminder of our vulnerability. It scared the bejeebers out of me, I'll tell you, and I saw a lot of people were really scared. So to protect our community, to be safer and feel safer, we must proact, we must be proactive, removing invasive, high-risk trees and shrubs, expanding defensible space assessments, and offering incentives, incentives for homeowners to learn about what they have to do, what plants are good, which ones to remove. Residents need both education and financial support to create defensible space. We live in a very precious place, but we need to protect our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have William Wierich, then Andrew Stasi, and then Ally Mills.
Evening, members of council. I, ditto what Dayoth just said. I want to point out that I learned a lot, being a member of this council during the Thomas Fire, in terms of speaking with fire department, going on tours, understanding the nature of the Thomas Fire, how it spread and what and where it was able to be stopped and not stopped. It was a flame front, more of a flame front type of fire, and of course, came from county into the city. Well, it didn't come into the city, thankfully, and we learned a lot about why it didn't. This Camarillo Fire is a different fire. It's an ember cast fire. We're already starting to learn lessons that it was a, the extreme distribution of embers from extreme winds, more than a flame front. And lessons are already being learned about the kind of things that Renee was just talking about, that had survivable structures and the structures that weren't survived. What I'm trying to get at is that this cannot be handled well. This community cannot be served properly by a city-centric focus on fire hardening and fire mitigation. It has to be a valley-wide because things come in from the county to the city. There's no wildland interface at Camarillo. It was, but the embers were so extreme that it went into the Heights area. I would ask the members of this council that will be remaining after the certification to please consider upping and getting more aggressive about working with a valley-wide plan with the Fire Safe Council that has not happened yet at the level that it should be, and that we start acknowledging and accepting that we are in a fire ecology permanently and need to look at how to deal with different types of fires and how to mitigate them and deal with the reality. So please consider trying to up the support for all the work that the Fire Safe Council's been doing towards a valley-wide perspective, and hopefully encourage and try to get more aggressive about getting county to kick in additional support for the Fire Safe Council so we're going to have a chance when next time happens, and it will happen. You think those people in Camarillo Heights ever thought this would happen to them? No, they didn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Andrew Stasi, and then Ally Mills.
Good evening, Andrew Stasi. I'm a local business owner, and a business owner that has been mailing mail for 35 years in the city of Ojai. I sent you an email. I don't know if you received it. Unfortunately, the thieves are here stealing mail out of the postal mailboxes. It's like taking candy from a baby. That's the unfortunate news. I personally had over $50,000 in checks stolen out of the mailboxes. They steal your financial information. They chemically wash your checks, cash the checks. The Ventura County Sheriff's Department is aware of it. The postal service is aware of it. The banks are aware of it. And the good news is that there's a simple fix. And the simple fix is secure mailboxes. Unfortunately, you can't mail packages in secure mailboxes. However, you can mail letters. And the benefit of that is, is that you don't have to stop at the, try to find a parking space and bring your mail and leave it on the counter, which is unfortunately what actually the postal service recommends. So, and maybe in some way, the city could contact the postal service and ask them to provide secure mailboxes for the city of Ojai in the interest of time. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next, we have Ally Mills.
Hello. My name is Ally Mills, and I am director of Ojai Valley Family Shelter. We are currently in preparation for our 32nd year, offering a nightly warming shelter, December 1st through March 31st, at the Ojai Valley Grange Building, located 381 Cruzerro Street in Miramani. Registration each evening is from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m., and guests are expected to leave for the day by 7:00 a.m. We are available to anyone that has been a resident of the Ojai Valley and has found themselves homeless. To register, we require either a current tuberculosis test or a chest X-ray that shows no signs of TB. During the eight months of off-season, we offer showers twice a week, Wednesdays and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. at St. Andrew's Church with Wilbur, our shower bus outfitted with two separate shower rooms. It was at one of these recent shower days that a tent village resident and longtime guest of the winter shelter let me know that she was told, if she left to stay at the warming shelter, there was no guarantee of acceptance back into the village at the end of the four months, that maybe a good word could be put in for her. Please do tell is the still policy. And if it is still policy, can you please do something to change that? Our goal at OVFS is to minimize suffering during the coldest months of the year. I would like to know that the work we have been doing for the past 32, 31 years is not in vain. Please consider amending the rules so that people coming to stay at the shelter are not faulted for wanting to stay with us. We should be encouraging the most vulnerable to come stay inside while it is available, not trying to scare them into thinking that they may lose their only chance at getting a place at a future cabin village. The person I am writing about has already made the decision to come stay inside with us for four months because she values her health. She's 73 years old. She will take her chances at reentry to Tent Village in April, and will go back to Camping Rough if she's not welcomed back. In regards to everyone camping rough, I really do appreciate the work that you have done to help the people living on city grounds, but what about the people that are sleeping all over town, hiding in parking lots, and on the side of roads in their vehicles? As some of you may know, I was the one that suggested 544 Gorham Road be considered for the placement of the cabin village. The property was not available at the time that you decided on the city lot, but it is now, and I really hope that you will reconsider. A safe-sleep parking lot for people to sleep in their vehicles has always been a dream of OVFS. The 15 acres Gorham Road provides can offer, it can fulfill that dream, and so much more. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Any comments online, Weston?
No raised hands yet, Mayor, but we do have one more in-house from Larry Steingold.
Ally's right. I mean, who tells this woman that she can't come back? All right, after leaving, so it can be warm. Larry Steingold, sorry. The gymnastic thing seems to me to be all self-inflicted because this wouldn't have happened if they had a committee in force, because then people could go to the committee and find out what's going on and have Mr. Davis come before the committee, commissioner, sorry. Has any more equipment been given away? Because that was one of the comments. With Mr. Wierich, I agree, the fires, ember screens, cost $50 on my house. Most of the homes that were burned in Camarillo were from embers. It doesn't take anything, just a requirement, or a suggestion, or incentive, or some help. And with the July 4th, because now that my insurance is being canceled, again, because I now have to take down a tree, I'm more involved, obviously. The drone show and embers is important. Now, why I'm up here is please don't spend any more money on the public works land until you do a Phase 1 environmental. And if it says to do a Phase 2, that means you drill to water, and you test the soil. And if it's dirty and doesn't meet residential standards, you have to remediate, and that takes time and money, of which we don't have. So please don't spend any more money on it until you have a Phase 1 environmental, because if it blows up, now we're back to go, and this is Plan B, which is what we heard last night, last week. And Plan C is back out on the street, and that doesn't work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Mayor, let's speak to our Zoom participants in our hybrid format. Zoom participants, if you'd like to raise your hand for general public comment on items not on the agenda, you may now. And we'll give you a brief moment to raise your hand. Last call. And we'll move on, Mayor.
All right. We will move on to the consent calendar. And council, we have 10 comments, public comments on this, so I'm going to suggest that we take them all now, and then we'll move through it. Okay, first, we have Larry Steingold on B, Brian Aitkins on F, and Steve Quilisi on G.
All right, Larry Steingold. There seem to be about $100,000.
So Larry, you're on B, you're on B, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But can we tell the public what B is?
Yeah, warrants paying bills.
Yes. City of Ojai warrants for October.
Right. There seem to be about $100,000 in legal bills, $65,000 for Matt's company and Taylor's company, I assume they're both same. And the other 35 or so, and God knows what else, because I don't know all the names. Is it possible to specify what these legal bills are for and why, and future warrants? Because that's a hundred, that's a million two run rate, you know, million three, and we've got a budget of 16 million. And we're doing it here, and we're doing it there, and it's got to come from someplace. And my guess is it's going to come from the road budget because that's the only place you can get it from. So please enumerate why we're spending all this money on legal bills? Is it defending? Is it, are they self-inflicted problems? Are they things that just happen in the normal course of events? I understand, you know, on retainer, I get all that, okay? But I just think it's getting out of hand for some odd reason. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Brian Aitkins on F, then Steve Quilisi, and then Larry Steingold again. And F for the public is to ratify appointments of the Historic Preservation Commission.
May I speak?
Yes.
Brian Aitkins, current chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I am here to thank you all for getting us to this point. Very, very appreciative. Also, the commissioners that are currently being reappointed, as well as the two new individuals. So when we first came here, I received a package. It had six applications in it. One was a Ventura, the other was not complete. One was a professor at Cal State University Channel Islands. He's busy right now. I'm supposed to call him January 8th. And then we, and Rosonia Frasina was someone who was on the commission for a while but needed to drop off. And that brings us to, so we have two, Laurel Moore and Randy Levitt. Laurel is probably still on a plane and out of the country, but, and that was planned some time ago. And we look forward to you meeting her. So I'd like Randy to stand up for me, if you would. Come join me. Thank you, Randy. Some of you know Randy. He was interviewed by Mayor Styx, Councilmember Rule, and myself in the conference room over here. We, I got to meet Randy when he came to the HPC. He owns a, one of the three spec houses there in the Arbelaude that Mr. Libby put together. These are very important to him, to us on the HPC. These are very important to him, to us on the HPC. He came because he wanted to make an adaptation, actually wanted to make a restoration. And so we worked closely with him and very appreciative of his efforts in working with us. And he contacted us earlier, I think this year, to inquire into being on the commission. Someone said one time, wouldn't it be nice to have people that have a landmarked home that's Mills Act? So I'm happy to tell you that Laurel Moore and Randy Levitt have a landmarked home that are Mills Act. They also have lots of other qualifications. We are very happy to suggest and recommend Randy Levitt and Laurel Moore. Laurel is, also was in the Libby House, Libby Gate House. She landmarked that and Mills acted that. She was the, many of you know her, she was the chef when, and worked with, when it became Bill Baker's Zoo. I was highly sensitive to that and watched that from a distance, and it turned out beautifully. I know many of you have seen that. So she's very, very much interested and had experience in this and in the business downtown. So I thank you again for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Could I just, I just want to welcome Randy and Laurel, both of whom I have, I have met and know, and I know them, to be deeply appreciative of historic preservation, and so I want to thank them and welcome them--
Yes.
--to the commission.
Well, we still need to vote as a council.
Sorry. Okay. Well--
We are hopeful.
--I guess you know where my vote is.
Thank you for being here tonight.
We're hopeful.
Okay, next we have Steve Quilisi, then Larry Steingold, and then William Wyrick, and this is on G. G is ratify appointment for the planning commission.
Thank you and good evening. I wanted first to thank previous councils who appointed and reappointed me to the planning commission for the eight years that I served. I'd like to think that I did good work and honorable work for the city. To anyone who wishes there were a different outcome on this item, I would say thank you for the kind words and thoughts, but it's time to lower the temperatures in these meetings and stop the discourse, I'm sorry, the discord that we have. Third, I have met with John Chesley on two occasions, not counting tonight. We've had a lot of discussion. I find him to be, excuse me, a good man, qualified in a number of areas, who will do good work on the planning commission. And I think if you approve his appointment tonight, you will have done a good thing for the city. Finally, I promise to you and all the citizens of this city that as I take office as city clerk, that I will bring to that job the same respect for the law, attention to detail, and dedication to the responsibilities of that job that I think I have displayed on the planning commission for eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And I just would like to add one thing. I just want to thank Steve for your eight years of service. I like to call Steve the king of code, knows everything, and excited for your new position as city clerk, as a city clerk, right? Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Councilmember?
And I just wanted to second that. Steve, thank you so much for all of your service, and I've really enjoyed working with you over these last couple of years. And I want to also just thank you for being so gracious in stepping into the new role that you have been elected into and in transitioning the role to someone who I have had the chance to interview and talk with, and I think is, I second what you've shared, that he is a great candidate. Thank you.
I want to thank you also, Steve, and thank you for wearing a suit to every meeting. And, you know, it makes us look good. Thank you. I've watched you for eight years. I have such appreciation for your attention to detail. Thank you.
Suit really lifts the bar, I think.
It does. It ups our game, for sure. And I just wanted to say, as I have said many times to you, I have appreciated your willingness to work towards yes. And I have always felt that that was just a really important quality and skill. And so I thank you for that. I thank you for working towards yes. And I look forward to you being our city clerk.
Yeah, I support the comments. Thank you, Steve, for all the hard work you've done for the city, and you're going to continue to do, and also thank you for the graceful way in which you handed over the reins to the next commission.
All right. Next we have Larry Steingold on G, and then Bill Wyrick, and then Bill Miley. And we are still on the planning commission ratification.
Yeah. Larry Steingold, I'm not at all understanding of all the legalities regarding interviews, applications, the process, but it would seem to me that if people apply for something, even if they're not qualified, or you don't want them, or because they're a bomb thrower, politically incorrect, sorry, if they don't throw stuff, you know, ask questions, they're not chosen. I get that, okay? But they need to be interviewed. You need to interview everybody who applies for the position the correct way with three people. I believe that's the way it goes, right? And that's the way it should be. I was not interviewed, and nor do I expect to get picked, but that's beside the point, okay? There are others. Because you want volunteers, you want people to show up, treat them respectively. It looks bad if you don't interview volunteers. Please, just do that for them, for the city, for us, because we're the volunteers. And Steve, Steve did a great job, and Mr. Chesley, I'm sure will do very nice, do well. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next we have Bill Wyrick, then Bill Miley, and then Bill Miley on K also.
Evening again, Council. Just real quick, ditto to what has already been said. I really, I think Mr. Quilisi exemplifies the spirit of public service and volunteerism. And I also want to point out that one of the issues, I believe, in this election cycle for the mayor's seat was transparency in public engagement. At least that was debated. And a pretty resounding vote, and I think that one example of how we should do things different is what Larry talked about. We had Park, I know personally, of people that applied for Park and Rec Commission positions, never even heard back from the city. We know that several people that applied for the planning commission position were not interviewed. It's just a measure of respect to the citizens that if they fill out an application, that they be interviewed. And I'm hoping that we're going to turn the page after certification and reinstate that kind of value in the operation of this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next we have Bill Miley on I, which is the Clean Power Alliance Building Electrification Assistance Program.
Metamayor, I put in cards for I and K.
You want to go for both of them? Well, three minutes--
And F.
Did we miss you for F?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry. Do you want to make a comment on F right now?
I do.
Okay.
Similar to the next consent item, which is the planning commission appointment, please give the public a statement of credible background for each of the proposed appointments you're going to make. It's important to know the makeup of our advisory committees. In addition to just knowing their name. So that's F. Thank you. So am I up again?
You are up for I, which is the Clean Power Alliance.
Oh, okay. Yes. The proposed agreement to seek funding for electrification of elements in our city seems very worthy. In its 13 pages for this participatory agreement, there are dozens of issues to be considered in that. This is very significant for our city, as it offers up to $250,000 per project for electrification. Since this is very detailed and impactful, I suggest, rather than having it on a consent calendar, and I had never understood that this is on the agenda beforehand, it be sent to the planning commission for public review and commission recommendation. This will address the issue of being transparent and also promoting its goals, because the public will know more about it once approved by the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. All right, we will move on to item K. Bill, do you want to stay up?
I do.
Okay, and then we will have Teal Rowe on K, and then Michelle Thomas.
Oh, yes. There it is. Good. Laws of nature. There is a section in this proposed ordinance which I consider violates the original intention of public interest law, and is unjust. Here's the unjust part. If the plaintiff wins, they can collect all the costs, expert witnesses, court costs, lawyer costs, from the defendant. But the defendant, if they win, they cannot collect any costs unless they file another lawsuit alleging it was, quote, "a frivolous and lacked any merit lawsuit." But they have to win it to be able to file another suit to get the money. All the justice weight appears to be with the plaintiff, and the defendant gets none, as I see it. I believe this public interest law, as applied, is wrong. I did some research after I sent the email to the website and found on the Goldwater Law Institute, this statement. This examines the legal and policy reasons why most courts treat defendants differently when it comes to a public interest fee, what they call a fee-shifting statute. The fee-shifting statute themselves does not permit government defendants, if you sue the government, from collecting fees from the plaintiff, even if they lose. And why do they do that? Because it applies to the government as a defendant to prevent claims in order to protect the public interest protection, like, I sue the city, I lose, the city sues me for costs. And that neighbor decides not to sue the city, so it protects the public from government retaliation. It just doesn't happen. But it should not apply to citizen plaintiffs and defendants, and in this case, it does. I think it's wrong. I understand it's not common for a government ordinance to explicitly allow private plaintiff damages from the defendant. I would like your council to reconsider this by equalizing the weight of the justices and to allow--
Thank you, Bill. We have three more comments on the same item, Michelle Thomas, Larry Steingold, and Bill Wyrick. And this is Rights of Nature, everybody. Oh, and Teal, I'm sorry, Teal's next.
You know, there must have been a reason why Taylor ordered it as she did. Is there, could we ask the city attorney?
I'm happy to explain now, or I'm happy to wait till the end of public comment and then explain further.
Okay, as long as you explain. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, again. And like I said before, I mean this comment with all due respect, and coming down from all the courts, I ask that you not pass the nature ordinance until you give the public proof and steps you intend to take in order to enforce what you propose. I ask that you console the public with exact steps intended toward accountability in your role as leaders. I request that you state the factual steps that you're willing to take in order to enforce. I'm personally witnessing trees and wildlife being affected by each decision made, either through planning and ministerial decisions, and sometimes being backed by you. We are all responsible, and you are responsible for these decisions. In what I gave Weston to give to you, Exhibit 1 and 2 are oak trees on a build-out on Aliso Street. There's an oak tree standing. The next picture is stumpless. No oak tree, it's dead, stump ground out. Exhibit 3, 4, and 5 are a chain-link fence that blocks off Shelf Road. It blocks a historically-used fire road that comes up from the north of Daly and has been used historically lined with hotshots and fire department and a Shelf Road. It's blocked off with a chain-link fence. There's also a line on Exhibit 4, which is a wildlife trail coming down to Shelf Road, now blocked off to continue on to go get water, and blocked off by a chain-link fence. Those are the exhibits that Weston, I gave to Weston to give to you. I ask that you get congruent with the actuality of nature within the city and the surrounding valley areas before putting together an ordinance that looks good on paper. I again ask that you please fix these situations that I see conflicting this ordinance before passing it. I would also put a call out to the public to ask where there might be other contradictions in which this ordinance does not hold up in reality. And please assure us on how you intend to enforce from that point on. We care about our natural resources, we care about our wildlife. The oaks cannot speak. The deer, the coyotes that use that trail cannot speak. I swear, tonight, I wish that all of those animals were the equivalent of people speaking about the rec department. I wish they, those animals and those trees could speak tonight. Yes, we do care about our natural resources, and please make actual caring a reality, not an abstract falsity through this ordinance. And I thank you for your time. It's really an intense--
Thank you, Teal.
Did you say that you gave Weston a hat? Okay.
It's five photographs. One is the oak tree on Aliso that's gone. The other three photos are the chain-link fence on city property that lines Shelf Road, cuts off a fire road, truck width, Fire Road, cuts off a wildlife trail coming down from the mountains into town. Thank you.
Thank you, Teal. Next--
Mayor, I can explain. We've received some materials at the dais, which will be, will be received as written public comments in the record, and those can be made available to council in your direction as well.
Thank you very much. All right, these are still comments on K, Rights of Nature. We have Michelle Thomas, then Larry Steingold, then William Wyrick. Okay, I'll put you, okay. Okay, thank you, Michelle. Next we have Larry Steingold on Rights of Nature, then Bill Wyrick, then Anita Cram.
Larry Steingold, Teal is right, okay? But we need to change the name and put this in a different category in our ordinances. It should be Title 10. While I understand that Leslie, and this is good for nature, I think that's a great thing, but my city councillor called it what it is. It's a development management tool. Okay, that's what it is. And we can use, and everything there, okay, can be used for that. And Teal's right. How do we enforce it? What's going to happen when someone does site work? Does that trigger a lawsuit? Does the city actually defend site work or prevent site work? Because if it starts changing water flow, who's going to protect downstream? So this could be really good for development management. We can stop almost everything with this. So if we're planning to do that, be prepared for lawsuits. And one of the quotes from the person who was pushing this was that they don't care if the city goes bankrupt so long as it moves the agenda. So please be aware of that, and that's where we could go, and I'm sorry I'm boring you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Bill Wyrick and then Anita Cram.
Evening again. I think there's clear situation here where you have an unfortunately too broadly defined, more or less symbolic type of ordinance that isn't targeted, has not been thoroughly vetted, is full of unintended negative and positive consequences that aren't fully understood, really rampant unintended consequences. If you study the history of these types of ordinances being adopted that expand the right to sue in a way that's not clear and targeted, you have all kinds of problems that you did not expect. Let me throw a few at you. I thought we were supporting local business. There's a ban here on fertilizer. Well, you'll go to ACE. More business to minor oaks, less business to true value. Is that what we want? The physical solution that's being proposed, I have no knowledge of it. I noticed there was a carve-out for the Matilha Dam removal. I didn't see a carve-out for the physical solution to help us hopefully avoid adjudication and protect our water rights. Didn't see that. Are we going to have the right to sue people with their septic tanks in the Arbolata because they're contaminating the aquifer? List could go on. I think the problem with these types of ordinances is that they are not thoroughly thought out and vetted, and this should be, should be continued for more thorough vetting. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Anita Cram.
Good evening, everyone. In its principle, I support the rights of nature. And on the fertilizer thing, you know, it's not all development because there are things like fertilizer, and it's not all fertilizers. It's ones that contain phosphorus that can contaminate waterways. But also, like Teal, I am concerned about things that are happening in our valley and how we enforce this. And, you know, trees are a big one, and I'm going to mention this now, I'm going to mention this later. I think the city needs to contract with an arborist that has high professional credentials and standards that can look at the situation of trees in the valley. I don't think it's wise to be relying on developer-funded arborists to make decisions about the trees. As you all know, I live in the cottages among the flowers. There's a creek improvement project that's, as I understand from the city and the process of getting state permits right now for stream bed alteration. There are three valley oaks along that creek. Who's going to protect those? Those are probably all going to die because they're going to deepen the creek, they're going to pile... I'm going to take pictures and send these to you. One of those valley oaks is right on the edge of the creek bank. I don't know how that oak tree can survive this creek improvement. My understanding is from the surveyor that came out, they're going to put a huge diversion pipe where they're going to divert part of the creek here, take it down several cottages and put it back in. Those valley oaks are right there. The valley oaks line the creek because they need that water. And also, when we talk about cooling, climate change, transpiration, which is a process that happens across the leaves of trees where water evaporates, tremendous cooling effect. The valley oaks are much more efficient at that because they don't have a waxy leaf. The scrub oaks do. So the more valley oaks we cut, the more we're cutting our nose off in spite of us because of all of this global warming. So this applies to rights of nature because this is nature. And this creek improvement is going to cut off a wildlife corridor for however long. I can't really get any information that was never flushed out in any kind of public hearing and development. So I don't have a clue what's going on. I'm getting it from the surveyors that come out, I'm getting it from people who are constructing where they've already, you know, one oak has died, there's a new building that's going up so close to an oak, I don't know how that one could survive. Every one of those cottages has oak trees very close. I think we can expect to lose all of those oak trees over time. So thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Any comments on consent online?
Mayor, there's no raised hands on Zoom, but let's be clear to our Zoom participants, we are accepting public comment on consent calendar items 1A through 1K. And now is the time to raise your hand for items 1A through 1K. Last call, and no raised hands, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion. Would anyone like to pull any items? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I got a quick comment on F and then get a lot on K.
K, okay, F and K. All right, is there a motion to approve everything other than F and K?
I'll make a motion to approve everything except F and A.
Second.
Second?
I'll second it, but I wanted to make just a quick comment to welcome our HPC and Arts Commissioners in item F. And thank you for serving the community. I see Karina back there, and Smitty West is also one of our Arts Commissioners who was part of this as well. So I just wanted to make a comment about that.
They're here?
I didn't know they were here.
Karina's right there, yeah.
We should bring them up.
Bring them up. Take the picture.
I mean, if they're here for F.
Karina's being reappointed, so thank you, Karina, and welcome, Randy. Thank you for being here. And Laurel, if you're listening, welcome. And Jonathan, congratulations. Okay, so all in favor?
Yeah, so I wanted to make a quick question on F.
Yeah, no, but all in favor of everything other than F and K?
Which specifically is items one?
F is just a comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We have, over many decades, always had an architect on planning. And that hasn't been the case for the last two or three years. And I'm really excited and happy and think that the Planning Commission will be served well by having an architect on the Planning Commission. And just wanted to make that comment. I think his, an architect's ability to see things in a design or plan and to go back and forth with a developer about good ideas that are based upon architectural principles is something that's really valuable to the Planning Commission that we haven't had for a while, and now we'll have that again. I'm happy about that.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that gratitude to Jonathan. Thank you very much. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At what point can our city attorney speak?
We're going to move on to K right now, so Mayor Protem pulled it. Would you like to begin?
Yeah, so I've got... So going through this ordinance, I think the first read-through, I thought, okay, well, so we're giving rights to nature, just kind of distributing that, and had some concerns about, you know, whether that was putting rights at odds with each other because we have common law rights that potentially are different than these rights of nature. But I guess I have the question, reading it through again, whether we're approving of rights other than, that relate to the flow of water?
Yes, so the key rights that are in the draft ordinance are Section 51603, the broader rights of nature, clean water, soil free from phosphorus, the natural communities' rights. And then the specific rights that implement those broader rights are in Section 51604, summarizing prohibition on certain kinds of water pollution, prohibition on the sale of fertilizer containing phosphorus with some exceptions. And so those then, and then in Section 51605, an additional revision allowing managed natural landscapes, even if there would otherwise be a rule that would require, prohibit those kinds of natural landscapes. So those are the specific rights within the broader set.
Yeah, so I guess a more direct question is, does this proposed ordinance create any rights for domestic animals?
Yes, that are enforceable by humans, right? So even in our current court system, only people can file lawsuits. But residents can file suits in order to defend the rights of nature, including the name of a natural community or communities. And that's in 51609. In so doing, they need to then tie it back to some violation of the rights of nature by another person or by a corporation or other entity.
Okay, so a... Someone could make a claim on behalf of a domestic animal that is contrary to what we generally, what the common law applies concerning rights related to that animal?
Right, so the default common law is that domestic animals are property, subject only to property law. That's the black letter law we all learned in law school. This ordinance seeks to go beyond that and give additional rights to those domestic animals as part of nature with specific prohibitions on what would be a violation of the rights of nature. But the intent is to go beyond the default common law and create an additional right to protect those natural communities, but enforceable by humans filing lawsuits or other entities withstanding in the court.
So aren't we creating a conflict between a person who owns a domestic animal and someone else who wants to come in and make a claim that the animal's rights are being violated?
They would have to show, the claimant would have to show that the animal's rights were somehow being violated. It's not merely keeping a domestic animal. This doesn't, this isn't, is distinct from the other ordinance regarding bodily liberty of certain creatures. This is about water provision, water pollution, phosphorus usage, and certain managed natural landscapes is the key rights. So you'd have to connect a violation, a claimant would have to connect a violation of the rights of the domestic animal to those specific prohibitions to be able to have a lawsuit.
Could I just jump in here?
Sure.
No, I have a bunch of questions. So let me finish. So does, does the proposed ordinance create rights for habitat that has been improved? So no longer natural habitat?
No, the focus is on natural habitat.
So is there an agency that regulates our water courses?
There are several.
Okay.
And your next question is which ones? So it's some combination of the state, the city, the county, the State Water Resources Control Board, the Local Water Resources Control Board, the Department of Water Resources, the US Army Corps of Engineers, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, the city, the county, depending on where exactly, certainly the city, and in some cases, the federal government.
And in the case of many of those agencies, part of their authority is to regulate and pollution of those, regulate the health of those systems of water?
In summary, yes, although the precise bounds of the regulatory power between those agencies, that varies.
Okay, and then do we have any data that there is excessive phosphate in our city of Ojai water courses?
We have prior commentary from the community that there had been concerns regarding water pollution in our water courses. I don't think we have, city hasn't developed a recent specific study, but I know there's been certainly resident commentary on that.
So pollution, my understanding is this doesn't address pollution, it addresses the effluent of phosphorus or phosphates.
No, there's both.
And that's the only thing it addresses.
No, there's both. So there's the prohibition on the use and sale and application of fertilizer containing phosphorus, and there's also the separate prohibition on summarizing water pollution in Ojai water bodies.
Okay, so we're going to become an additional water regulatory agency? We don't have any, but we don't have any data that we've got a water pollution problem in any of our streams.
So we have, again, resident commentary that has raised concerns regarding the pollution. We don't yet have detailed water quality data available to city, although I suspect we have it available from the Groundwater Management Agency and has been developed by the many parties in the water lawsuit.
Does Ojai currently have any mechanism, any staff, or any equipment to monitor just discharge of effluents into creeks and streams?
We contract for it if need be. I think at the moment, we're not presently monitoring water quality, although we are in coordination with agencies that are, which as I recall right now is the State Water Resources Control Board and Army Corps of Engineers, and I believe also the Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
And they'll, and they'll continue to do that.
Yeah, we expect...
They already do that, and they'll continue to do that without regard to this ordinance.
They'll follow their own laws, yes.
So does, does the ordinance regulate any substance other than phosphate and phosphorus?
Yes.
What does it regulate?
It prohibits any deposition or any discharge of anything that into Ojai water bodies that materially impairs the usefulness of that water for persons or for fauna or flora. So it prohibits harmful things, summarizing, that would be deposited into water in the city with several exceptions.
Okay, so it would potentially regulate the use of pesticides and herbicides in the area of a water course?
Yes, with the note that one of the key exceptions is if they are permitted agricultural or industrial operation with appropriate environmental regulations complied with. So a use, you know, a farmer who discharged some amount of wastewater effluent into a water course in the city that had appropriate permits from the relevant agencies, that wouldn't be a violation of this ordinance versus someone who just dumped a bunch of wastewater into the river without any permits.
So what, what does it add to enforcement that we, instead of just leaving the right to enforce or complain or seek regulation of discharge into our creeks and streams, what are we adding by giving rights to nature as opposed to giving the right to a human to enforce the regulations that are already in place?
The key that this adds is the ability of a person or entity bringing suit to force the court to focus on the harm to the natural environment itself. Too often, when, when a person who has seen a water problem or pollution problem, to use that example, goes to one of the regulatory agencies, we've talked about, the regulatory agency will focus on the harm to other humans and not always focus on the harm to the natural environment. This creates an ability to focus on the natural environment as itself an intrinsic thing potentially being harmed and creates an opportunity for any person or city resident to bring that concern to the attention of the court. As is, to be clear, will take the court to then pick up the ball and run with it. And we can't control what a court will do with this, but the idea is to create an ability for someone to take that case to a court, focusing on the inherent rights of nature is distinct from, is there a harm to another person?
Yeah, but the, the State Water Board regulates the quality of habitats already, doesn't it?
It regulates the quality of water discharge to and from regulated waters, not necessarily broader habitat focus.
Okay, I mean, I have an understanding that they, the State Water Board prevents pumping from groundwater basins if that will reduce the amount of water in a stream or a creek that will thereby damage the wildlife in the stream or the creek. So they are already enforcing wildlife in streams and creeks.
Certainly, to an extent.
We can circle back, but we're going to take turns, so who would like to go next? Councilmember?
Yeah, do I, do I get to like take a couple of minutes and then have a couple of minutes more? Or I can circle back. I think the major distinction here is, once again, the distinction between an entity having rights and an entity relying upon humans to protect it. Because ultimately, what happens with these regulatory bodies is, is that you bring a case and what they use to determine, not always, but the vast majority of time, is how is it detrimental to humans, which is not the question. We are trying to get away from that question. The question is, is that these... The question is, is that these natural entities have a right to thrive on their own without permission, without it being a reflection on how bad, um, our abuse of that system is to humans. That's the ultimate. It's the, and it's the difference between, as, uh, the city attorney said, um, the ability to bring a case for the entity itself, right? I mean, a right allows you to go to court and say, this right is being violated. If you don't have a right, what you need to do is, you need to find an enforcement agency who will believe you and stop it, right? I mean, so, so that's what we're trying to, um, that's what we're working with, is the difference between rights and protection. And I think that this is very telling, is that you get a permit to do something, and the permit allows you a certain amount of abuse, basically. That's really what it comes down to. That's, you're permitted a certain amount of, um, you know, maybe it's, let's just say exploitation, right? You're permitted a certain amount of exploitation of a natural resource for human production or profit, or whatever it happens to be. And what this allows is someone to say, no, I'm going to go to court, because this entity has a right to flourish, to survive this entity. So, um, that's, you know, that's the main question that we're dealing with here, is there, the regulatory agencies have failed us. And, and, you know, I hate to say that so blatantly, but I think it's pretty clear that the regulatory agencies have failed us, and there's no reason to assume as we move forward into the future that they are going to all of a sudden, uh, you know, come, come to, come riding in and save us. The EPA has been, uh, you know, gutted, as have most environmental laws. It's now, it's now up to the people, it's now up to the local jurisdictions to say, no, we're not gonna let this happen to things that we value. Um, and so that's what this law does. It says, no. You know, we, we trust that there are 10 regulatory agencies that can work on this, but in the end, if there's a violation and none of these regulatory agencies want to take this seriously, you can go to court, because these entities have a right to exist, to flourish, and to thrive. And that's what it's about. Um, and, and finally, I know my time is running out, but we crafted this so that it would be successful. We wanted to, to dream big, put everything in here, but we knew that it wouldn't be successful. Tara Taylor looked at all of the rights of nature ordinances that had come up through indigenous peoples and through municipalities, and she looked at what ones survived, court, uh, court cases, and she drafted it based on that. So this is not symbolic, this is meant to, to be able to be successful if challenged in court. That was her sort of red line, was she wasn't going to make this virtue signaling. This was, if it was going to go to court and if it did follow these parameters, the courts, there was precedent where courts had, had agreed to this and/or had shut down particular cases because they didn't have what she put in here. They would say, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna fine for you because you don't have this, this, and this. She took a look at that, and she said, well, we're gonna have this, this, and this. So, you know, I had a forum a year ago on the rights of nature. We had about 22 participants, and all of them, all of them were supportive, obviously, you know, self-selection, but they said, we don't know how to move forward. We, we, we understand the concept, but we don't know how to move forward. This is the way to move forward.
Councilmember Lang?
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, I just wanted to, to have a couple of points, just to piggyback on my colleagues, and then I also have a question for our city attorney. Um, so, uh, just to piggyback on what councilmember Rule was saying, and to speak also to one of the comments that we had about enforcement, Teal, I appreciate your, your comments, and so those were considerations that we had had in conversations with, with, with our assistant city attorney. And, uh, and so there is a whole section on enforcement, and we recognize that we don't have a very robust city staff, and we didn't want to tax our city staff anymore than they're, they're already, their plates are full. So we, 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 and we also wanted to have an, uh, an ordinance that would stand the test of time, that wouldn't, as Larry suggested, drive us into bankruptcy, or wouldn't bring on all kinds of additional, uh, legal challenges. And so we didn't take it to the nth degree where we could have in terms of protecting the, the, um, the wildlife corridors and things like that. We started small, thinking that as more and more communities consider things like this and more court cases happen that are outside of our city, that, um, that, that we could add on to it, that we could develop it further, but for right now, this, we were limited because we were balancing our city's needs and our city's, uh, capabilities and resources with the, with the issues that we're facing right now, and then also, uh, we're balancing that with where we could go and what we do want for, for nature. Um, so I just wanted to say that. And then I also had a question. I was contacted by the land conservancy, and they wanted to make sure, and I, I support this, uh, they wanted to make sure that their use of, they use some herb, some herbicides, specific herbicides for conservation efforts. And I wanted to make sure that, I, I believe I did read that, but I just wanted to, to double check. I, I know it's just, uh, fertilizers and herbicides containing phosphorus, I know there are certain chemicals, but I just wanted to make sure that for conservation efforts, that we could, um, that, that, that this ordinance would, would allow for that.
Yeah, that I can answer. So the use of, uh, certain kinds of herbicides would not be a prohibition of the ordinance if that use was approved by the probrogatory authority, probably the city for the land conservancy for using land inside the city, and if there was a justification that it protected the public health, safety, and welfare.
Great.
I think for the right situation, that set of findings could be made.
That, that, I, I, I think that, that, uh, that falls into the, the category of this would work for them. Thank you.
Councilmember Francina?
Yeah, so I want to express my support for the comments made by councilmember Rule and Lang. And, um, I, I agree that our regulatory agencies have failed us. All you have to do is, is for a glaring example, is the waste, uh, that comes from our factory farms and has, uh, I, I don't have all the data in front of me, but if you read it, it's just the, the level of pollution is just, uh, astonishing, you know, so, and, and they must have a permit to keep on, uh, you know, doing this. Something, something is deeply wrong. And also, I, I, as I understand it, this is a living document. If we run into glitches, we can bring it back and amend it, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
With three votes in the right process.
Yeah.
I would just like to express my appreciation to councilwoman, um, Lang and councilmember Rule for working so diligently on this and bringing it forward, because it is cutting edge, and it is new, and I understand the concerns of the community, and I appreciate you voicing those. Um, I think the word, the key word here is flourish that councilmember Rule brought up, that what this does is allows nature to flourish, and clearly, we've done, as, as humans, a horrible job taking care of our planet. You know, our, our county is, is the hottest, um, you know, it's heating up faster than any county in the continental U.S. So I think we're just at a point in history where we have to do something, and philosophically, uh, we're moving to the rights of nature and animals to flourish in any situation. So I would support this, and I have a lot of confidence in our city attorney, in our assistant city attorney, Taylor.
Yeah, I just think it's a credit for this one.
Both of you, uh, for working so diligently on this and for protecting us, um, and for having the courage to, to put it out there. So I would just like to voice my gratitude and support. Um, Mayor Protem, did you wanna?
Yeah, I got, I have some more comments, because I, I do oppose adopting this, and my biggest concern, besides the fact that I see zero evidence that we have a problem with our creeks and streams. If we did have factory farms, I would certainly be much more interested in this ordinance than I am based upon, you know, what actually exists here in Ojai. The, the ordinance creates a fundamental conflict between the rights of a property owner or the rights of somebody who owns and controls a waterway, and the rights of anybody else who wants to say, you don't have that right, I do, because I'm speaking for nature. Um, so what's gonna happen? You know, when we adopt laws, we're supposed to be adopting something that makes things more clear, more certain, so that people know how to behave in response to the law. What this does is create conflict, and so you can be sure that people will, um, will sue over the effort to enforce the rights of nature if it conflicts with somebody's property rights, or if it conflicts with the rights of the state to control our waterways, which is the current status of the law. So I want to make clear that I actually am a big supporter of environmental causes. Uh, my father was an act, an environmental activist. I went to law school with the idea that I was gonna, um, work defending the environment. When I got out of law school, it turns out that all the jobs available were for the polluters, so I went a different route. Um, so, another part that's kind of a conflict and a problem is, who gets to assert the rights of nature? Uh, so, you know, for those, so algae and moss apparently are gonna have, you know, benefit from phosphorus getting into the creek. Do they have, does algae and moss have any rights? Or the, or the animals that live off of algae and moss? How do we decide who gets to speak for animals? It's not addressed here. Um, and there's a great potential for there to be conflicting claims about the rights of nature. So, um, we have a system of law that relies primarily upon legal precedents, which means that a judge looks to decisions that have been made in prior cases about how to balance rights between, you know, those things. And now we're saying that a judge has to look at a, so we're not wiping out any of these precedents, we haven't declared that the precedents are gone, but now we're throwing in a, uh, idea that there's, that there's rights that aren't previously recognized by law. And, uh, you know, believe me, I'd, I'd love to give nature, you know, the power over what people want to do to make, you know, profit or whatever, but this is like, you know, just throwing a grenade into our legal system, and, you know, maybe that's what, maybe that, you know, that's a strategy, I guess. I don't think it's a good strategy. I don't think it's a strategy for our little town to be, you know, the, the, the person's throw, you know, I don't think our little town should be the ones throwing grenades. If we saw other cities that were doing something successfully that was outside the, uh, box, I would be all in favor of jumping into that, but I think it is very, you know, foolish for us to get involved in advancing, uh, rights that really aren't recognized and just create problems for the people who are actually gonna be in court and fighting over, um, things that aren't gonna be clear at all. So those are my comments.
Thank you. All right, uh, motion on the table?
Yeah, I'm gonna put a motion table that we, uh, adopt this ordinance. Um, I, I guess that's, that's the motion, the motion that we adopt the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Yes, motion by councilmember Rule, the second by councilmember Lang to adopt as recommended. Roll call. Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Whitman?
No.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, let's take a brief break, and they will, we will come back for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back. If you could take your seats, please. And we will move on to the public hearing, item number two. Appeal of Planning Commission Decision... Can everyone come to quiet, please? Appeal of Planning Commission Decision to Approve the Request for Design Review Permit and Conditional Use Permit Including an Off-Site Overflow Parking at the Capri Hotel. And we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. My name is Maura McAluso. I'm your principal planner. Thank you, Mayor.
Just a moment. If you could come to quiet, it's really hard to hear up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. So, as you've already stated, this is an appeal. The Planning Commission approved on August 7th a design review permit and conditional use permit for outdoor activities at the Capri Hotel. The Capri Hotel is located at 1180 East Ojai Avenue. Along with the approval was also, sorry, off-site parking, which is at 1216 East Ojai Avenue. The approval includes weekly, monthly, and annual events, and also weddings. And these events are subject to approval of... Conditions of approval... Sorry. This feels like it's going in and out. Conditions of approval to reduce potential impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. And those are included in your packet for your information. On August 22nd, an appeal was filed by Richard Dougherty, and that was within the 15-day appeal period. The appellant's application included justifications, and that's also included in your packet in Attachment C, but I'm going to let you know what those are now. The applicant's justification includes that it's in the best interest of those that live and work in the city of Ojai to refrain from making piecemeal discretionary land use changes when the city is in the middle of a general plan update. Approving a significant change of allowed uses at this time precludes the city council from limiting or curtailing this other expansion... Or, excuse me, this and other expansion or growth in the interest of an economic and land use planning approach that does not move to protect the daily quality life or of life for Ojai residents and the viability of existing businesses by addressing this topic in our general plan update. The other piece of justification states that, over the past several years, the city of Ojai has approved several substantially sized land use changes that have and will continue to increase noise, air, and water pollution... Or, excuse me. Yes. And water and electricity consumption, sewage loads, release of climate-warming gases, traffic impacts, loss of habitat and wildlife corridors, with little or no environmental review of the cumulative impacts of all those and other projects as required by CEQA. So, back to the Planning Commission. Having received guidance from staff, the Planning Commission approved the expansion of the Capri Hotel due to several factors. And those factors are: the identification and securing of off-site parking within a walkable distance. That's the 1216 East Ojai site, and it is 568 feet away. Over the past two years, the Director of Community Development has approved several temporary use permits, and those outdoor activities went without any incidents. The applicant recognizes the need for a full buyout of rooms at the facility regardless of the size of a wedding, for wedding events only. And along with the standards and guidelines that are included in our municipal code, a conditional use permit provides staff the opportunity to provide additional conditions of approval. And specific conditions of approval that were added for this project include that no events are to exceed the available onsite plus the off-site parking at 1216. And the applicant or property owner must provide a signed parking agreement, and that agreement is to be recorded at the county. During the outdoor activities or events, the staff of the hotel is to monitor the occupancy of parking lots onsite and the one that's offsite. And the setup of the temporary use permits is to occur no earlier than about an hour before the event and tear down within an hour after the event. Or, and is also not to commence until after the event. So, staff's recommendation is for the council to consider adoption of the resolution in your packet that affirms the Planning Commission's decision to approve the request for the design review permit and conditional use permit, along with the off-site parking. And I'm available for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. McAluso. Any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tim.
So, what rules are there? What ordinances or zoning prevents the Capri, the applicant, from holding these events without having a special use permit? And is it excluded by the zoning that they would hold these types of events on their property?
So, outdoor events are required by the municipal code to have a conditional use permit. And so, we all... They also can, though, have a temporary use permit if it was just like a one-off. However, to have ongoing events, they're required a conditional use permit.
Okay. And then, what does the conditional use permit rules say about what circumstances allow somebody to get a conditional use permit?
So, a conditional use permit, along with the regular conditions that whether you have a conditional use permit or not, you're required to follow, like noise and hours of construction, or different things that are in the code. A conditional use permit is an opportunity for staff to look at the type of use within the neighborhood and to condition it so it will have less or no impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. Does that answer your question?
I think. But I think I'm having a disconnect, and I want to make sure that...
So, it's...
I understand. So, I guess I have this in mind from my time when I was on planning, but it was a long time ago. So, I could have forgotten, or rules have could have changed, or... But I always understood that if... That you either did the uses that were permitted, or you showed that you had some type of hardship that meant that you... If you established that there was a hardship, then you would be allowed to go beyond what was permitted for that piece of property. Is that what we're doing, or am I in a different...
You're in a different category. That sounds more like a variance. So, there are uses that are permitted. There are uses that are conditionally permitted. And so, outdoor activities are specific... In the code, it's specific that an outdoor activity requires a conditional use permit. And that's to ensure that it works within the neighborhood, that whatever the use is that's being requested. A variance, on the other hand, is going beyond what's permitted, and that's usually more like a topographical situation, like a...
Okay.
I don't need to...
So, then, if I understand it correctly, it... Holding events is not something that's prohibited, but you have to get a conditional use permit in order to get that? And then, it's at the discretion of the Planning Commission to decide what conditions should be imposed in order to mitigate whatever...
Yes.
Problems might arise from the event.
Right. And we're talking specifically about outdoor events. If this... Indoor events do not require a conditional use permit. But everything else that you said is exactly the way it is. Yes, it's a discretionary permit. And that is at the purview of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Any other questions, council? Nope.
Yep. This is just a clarifying question. So, what I understand is a conditional use permit is required because there are specific kinds of things that you take care of, or that are relevant depending on, you know, the place, the event, the time. So, that's why you have a conditional use permit, so you can look at those specifically and say, you know, this is what it has to be. Correct?
Basically. It's for certain uses, it's to make sure that, yes, that it's appropriate for the location and the time and the activity. Yes. Outside.
Right. So, it's really a protection against sort of flagrant, you know, break loose, let's have a party on the whole block.
Basically.
Okay.
I have a question about the parking. I know this is something that was expressed at the Planning Commission meeting. I was there, so... Or, I zoomed in, one of the two. But, so, there... Are they looking... Are they going to develop the lot next door for parking? Or, does their current parking lot accommodate for the amount of guests that they would be proposing?
So, they have a lot... Or, they have a parking onsite. They have 33 parking spaces. And for the type of events that they're looking to have, they would most likely require overflow parking. And so, they're looking for that overflow parking to be east, not next door, but it's east 568 feet, to be approximately exact, at 1216 East Ojai Avenue. And the site is at 1180. So, it's east on Ojai Avenue.
Thank you. And so, would I be correct in saying that that would not... That we wouldn't have to worry about people parking in, like, all through that Golden West area and on the residential streets?
Correct. And so, the project includes that the applicant would be informing their guests where to park, and there would be some signs. And there would also be... It's specific in your packet that staff of the hotel would be monitoring the parking.
Okay. All right. Nice.
One more clarifying question, too. And this is mostly just to follow up on what I heard in that meeting, but also the same kinds of noise ordinances that restrict noise after certain hours, like all of that, music being played, like we... Those have all been considered in this... In the original approval of the project?
Yes. And the conditions of approval... Well, the noise condition and the conditions of approval are that they maintain or the standard commercial decibels. So, yeah. And also, the hours of the events are specific in the project's description and in the conditions and in the resolution.
I have one other question. I think I saw from the staff report that the applicant had been coming forward with temporary use permits, and you'd been working through them event by event? And so, what triggered the desire or desirability of going to a conditional use permit as opposed to continuing to do it event by event?
If a site wants to have continuous events that are outside, it becomes a point of, we're going to do a conditional use permit and look at it as a whole package, a whole picture, instead of just a couple a year? If there are just a couple of events here and there? That's different than, we want to have, you know, X number of weekly, monthly, annual events and weddings on a regular basis. So, we look at that, and then we can talk about, okay, how many numbers, you know, how many events? When are they going to be? And just regulate them. Again, if there's just a couple of events now and then, it's kind of a different... It's a different animal. And you can stick with a temporary use permit.
What the plan is to do, many events?
Yes. And I do have here a list of, like, the different types of weekly, monthly, annual events and weddings, the numbers of them, and the numbers of people that are going to be allowed at the events. There's a maximum number of attendees. There's a maximum number of attendees. And so, uh, with this, we get to condition, therefore control, how many, when, uh, the number of people, that type of thing.
Is that in our report, the number of events, what, the staff report?
That is definitely in your packet. Part of it could be that, uh, might not be in your, I'd have to have your staff report in front of me, honestly, but I do know that the.
I can jump in on that one, yeah.
Go ahead.
It's condition number 26 in the draft council resolution, which is page 2-14, lays out the hours and limitations on the different types of events. And so, in summary, what's proposed, a subject obviously to the council's decision tonight or in the future, is weekly events, uh, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sundays, max 50 occupancy per event. Monthly events, uh, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sundays, max 12 per year, uh, max 150 patrons, uh, per event. And then annual events, uh, same, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sundays, max 180 patrons, occupancy and no more than four per year. And then weddings, Friday and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, occupancy shall not exceed 180 patrons, no more than 15 weddings per year. And, uh, full room of, weddings require a full buyout of the property. Um, and then also some additional requirements on event, uh, start and end times. And on the noise point also, that there be no amplified music for weekly events. Amplified music would be allowed for monthly, annually and wedding events, but with a requirement that speakers be pointed away from the residences towards Ohio Avenue and no amplified music after 9:00 PM, all of which is, of course, is subject to council adjustment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. Well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. First, we're going to hear from the applicant and then the appellant. And, uh, I'm going to suggest we give the applicant and the appellant five minutes each. So.
I believe the applicant is on Zoom.
Kenny's on Zoom?
Yes, we have. Hi, everyone. Sorry, I couldn't come in person, I'm a little bit under the weather. Um, good evening, council, good evening, Mayor Betsy. Um, I just wanted to thank Mara and Lucas for your time and effort preparing our conditional use permit for the Capri. Um, what, the amount of events that, uh, Matt Summers just, uh, said is actually incorrect. Uh, what we agreed upon in the planning commission meeting was to lower the numbers and to make it equal to what we have for the Ojai Rancho Inn. Uh, we would be allowed four weekly events for up to 20 unregistered guests. For monthly events would be six per year for up to 100 people. Annual events would be two a year for up to 150 people. And weddings, 12 a year for up to 125 people. Um, all of these events, we would, uh, ensure that it's all also a buyout of our hotel for the annual and the weddings, um, and for the monthlies if it's up to 150 people. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that, um, we hope that we can come to an agreement tonight for our final approval. We have met with our neighbors, including Richard Darty. We've listened to their concerns and we intend, intend to diligently monitor noise and parking concerns to remain compliant with our permit restrictions. We hope to approve our neighbors with the approval of this permit, that we will continue to respect the neighborhood and host events that serve our community as well as our guests in a positive way. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Kenny. And now, we'll hear from the appellant, Mr. Doherty.
Evening, Mayor Sykes, council. The CUP that we're talking about right now, uh, Kenny's awesome. I love Kenny. I'm not trying to take any money out of her pocket. I understand what she's trying to do, develop, I, I get all of that. Um, one of my biggest concerns is that parking lot. And that parking lot, I live on Gregory, and that parking lot, people that live against that fence, there's, you know, good friends of mine, Stephen Holly, they have a pre-K and a second grader. Um, we have Linda elderly, you know, we have Karen elderly, we got two new young families that just moved in. If those events end at 10 o'clock and people are in there, and there's only 40, I think there's 42 parking spots, 46 parking spots, something like that, and they're in there and they're starting their cars up, headlights are going on, you know, friends, horns, like obviously, you know, you're, you're, you're at a, at a wedding or something of that effect. That was my biggest concern, you know, was, was those folks right there, you know? And also parking in, in, you know, the neighborhood, right? You know, people, you know, I work 14, 16-hour days, I come home, all the parking spots are taken, I got $4,000 worth of tools in the back of my truck, you know, like, I, I, that's, that's tough, you know? Um, but I think those concerns were, were really my biggest. Kenny's, again, awesome, lowering those numbers down to what seems to be reasonable numbers. Um, one of my biggest concerns, one of, really kind of the elephant in the room is that we're, we're approving these things when you guys dial in the general plan. Um, I feel like maybe the general plan should be dialed in and then we should work towards that plan. Um, and, and maybe just hang on to approving, you know, conditional use permits until we have that plan in place. Um, I think that's really important, it is to me. Um, and, you know, I, I'm not, this is all new to me, never been to one of these things before, this just really struck a chord with me and I just wanted to, uh, to kind of voice my opinion. And again, you know, Kenny's great, I love, she's, she's awesome. So, I, I just don't, I don't want, I don't, you know, I, I'm not, not interested in trying to make bad plays. So, that's basically what I'd say. I appreciate your all's time tonight.
Thank you, Rich. Um, next we have Debbie Rubenstein and then Larry Steingold and then Bill Miley. Is Debbie here? Nope, okay. Uh, Larry and then Bill Miley and then Andrew Stasi.
Uh, Larry Steingold. Um, I actually went over to the property and saw the building and saw the parking because Debbie and friends live on Golden West. And this, this planning committee, commission committee, approved the rancho. Same terms, same conditions, one year to make sure that they don't ha, cause a problem. And that was verified that they didn't cause a problem. So, they removed the condition except upon sale. So, they're playing by the rules at the rancho, which is even more residential. Um, the lot, they can put up a sound wall, they can put up our bavita, they can do all those things to protect the neighbors just like any other commercial property next to a residential area. Okay, not a big deal. It's an expense, but that's the cost of doing business. And I would just make it conditional and you can change all the rules, you can make it as tough as you want. You can put, uh, decibel meters, uh, remote control decibel meters that watch the sound, you can keep their feet to the fire, you can do whatever you want. And then if they make mistakes and they don't correct it, pull it, shut off the, the temporary use permits too, you can say, hey, you're a hotel, that's what you are, call it a day. But otherwise, you know, play, if they play by the rules, you, you know, enforcement and just go forward. But have a sound wall if that's an issue, have our bavita, they won't see anything. And have them over there, because if people start blowing their horns, shut it down. If people start causing a trouble, if they're drunk walking up the street, shut it down. You know, it, it's, it's not difficult. All right? It just takes a little effort. Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Miley, then Andrew Stasi and then Janine.
It would have been helpful in the report at the beginning to identify the applicant, the appellant, is living in a nearby neighborhood. I didn't see that, took a while to find out. Also, by placing the appellant's letter at the end, I felt it smothered the reasons for the appeal. I believe the appellant has legitimate reasons for making this appeal. First, the general plan is slowly being presented to the planning commission, the public, and eventually to the city council. The timeline is difficult to know and knowledgeably understand. I have no idea where it is. The role of motels being turned into recreation, activity and amusement centers should be addressed. They're gradually being morphed into something they originally not. Also, the technical issue of not having a drafted minutes available during the appellate period is a key. At the applicant has, as his own understanding, he has either watching the meeting, attending the meeting, watching the video, but he didn't read the minutes because they weren't there. Therefore, I believe the city councils should accept the appeal, postpone the rehearing until the general plan is complete and adopted and short-term minutes are written and available to the public. Now, we have a laws of nature. Maybe we need a laws for residents. Protect them from pollution by other human beings. I am hopeful this appeal will be approved as karma, as karma commerce seems to win frequently in this town over residents. Sound noise needs to be monitored with digital sound recording instruments that the city frequently looks at. Data collection is the way to verify compliance. The general plan is not complete. We have a tourism study now that we paid for, are paying for, that that be finished before we add more tourism activities that may affect residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, next we have Andrew Stasi, then Janine and then Anita Cram.
Good evening. I had sent in a letter, I'm hoping that you received it. Um, I want to spend a lot of your time, I'm hoping you're getting a, you have an opportunity to deliberate some of the points that I don't think were actually covered in the planning commission meeting. And, um, primarily, uh, the concern, first of all, is the offset of bed space. When you have these events, you are taking beds out of the marketplace, beds that are critically needed for other community events, um, and are not being replaced. We don't have new motels being built, we don't have an Airbnb ordinance that provides additional beds in, in the city of Ojai. And when people don't have a place to stay and they're going to these other events, uh, the motel or the hotel will be selling out their hel, hotel for these events, they have to go somewhere else to stay. There simply is no place to stay in Ojai, which means they're going to go to Ventura and in reverse, create more traffic coming back into Ojai. It's axiomatic, that's going to happen. Additionally, um, the concern when you have more traffic or when you have more people is, is one of an environmental concern. I don't think that's really been looked at. It, I, I understand that, um, the motel's already a, a, a place where people come, but again, you're expanding the use. If you were to create a new wedding venue, what would be the conditions regarding traffic and environmental impact? I don't really think that's been looked at. And it's pretty clear, when, from a traffic perspective, that you will be increasing the traffic, which is already unten, untenable in, in town. So, unless there's an overriding consideration for expanding this business, um, I think at this point it should be paused until all these impacts are, are, are looked at, excuse me, and possibly overlaid with the intent of a new general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, next we have Janine and then Anita Cram and then John Buetti.
So, good evening, everyone. Thank you, council. Um, so, I am opposed for this. I do think that it needs to be paused and, and looked into for several reasons, more so, um, I live on Gregory, okay? So, I'm a homeowner right there on Gregory. Uh, we're actually behind the Casa Ojai parking lot. Um, I can hear my neighbors do their dishes, okay? So, when the Libby Bowl is playing, I actually can hear the Libby Bowl and the bands playing. So, when we talk about amplified music and we talk about noise, that's a, that's a really big concern for me. Um, also, I, I am happy that they reduced their number of events, but I'm okay with the, the sound baths, the yoga sessions, the movie screenings, but what I'm not okay with are these big events, the, the 150 patrons, the 180 people, you know, the 12, I think it was, I don't know, six weekly events? I mean, that's every day of 100 people. We already have an overflow traffic problem on Gregory and, um, and in that area, people already park around the Hummingbird, um, that's already an issue. So, the 33 spaces that are at the Capri and then the overflow of 45, that's not going to satisfy the 150 to 180 buyout, that's going to be a problem. Um, also, you know, events, when you're breaking down, think about the tables, this is all outdoor events, right? So, stages, tables, chairs, silverware. The vendors aren't going to be able to break down till, once the event ends, that's 10:00 PM. And the event, you know, clicking, I mean, that's going to be a lot of noise for our neighborhood. And I moved to Ojai and purchased a home because it's a quiet little town. And I, I'm fearing that we're turning it into this circus of shows and events and come here and do this and do that. And also, it takes away from downtown. The vendors and the people that are paying, you know, their taxes on the brick and mortar, some of those pop-ups, those, for those vendors, uh, those events, that will, you know, deter the people that are staying at the hotel to stay at the hotel. It's kind of like Vegas, you know, come here and we got it all, you don't have to go anywhere else. But that's not what Ojai is about. Um, so I am concerned in the conditional use, they also have a fireworks permit. You know, I, I heard a lot of people talking about, let's gear away from 4th of July fireworks. I mean, look at what happened in Camarillo. We are, I mean, it's, it gave me PTSD to think about what could be happening. And there's also an open flame and candle use in the permit. So, I really would stress the council to read the, this applicant.
Thank you, Janine. Uh, next we have Anita Cram and then John Buetti.
Hello. Um, I agree with many of the comments already made, particularly the general plan and that, you know, this just really needs to be looked at closer. We haven't taken, I don't feel there's been a holistic look at how city council decisions affect our own neighborhoods and community members' daily lives. We're getting at a cumulative effects stage. Um, impacts of tourism are huge in our community. This isn't going to help that. This calls for seven days a week, 8 to 10 PM for two hotel properties? That's a lot. And, uh, letter F of this staff report says that, um, this meets negligible, negligible or no expansion of existing use. However, D right above that says that the applicant is proposing to expand the hotel use by including weekly, monthly and annual events for registered and non-registered guests to be held at the subject site, which is two hotels. You know, weekly daytimes are outside of rush hours, so we're just going to increase traffic during other times, you know? This is going to be a huge traffic impact and make congestion worse for many more times of the day. Almost all of these people are going to have to come through town to get, they're not going to, you know, come from Santa Paula for the most part. Um, I don't think you can accurately say that traffic congestion will be avoided or that, and it says this in the report, pedestrian and vehicular safety and welfare, welfare are provided for. I don't have a clue what that means or how that's provided for. Um, the property owning, owner will educate attendees on approved parking locations. There's nothing to prevent them from going into neighborhoods. I mean, I think it's unrealistic to think that that's not going to happen. Amplified music not allowed for weekly events, but there could be events that, um, you know, show, come up, several different events that happen in a week span that have, you know, amplified music. There's just so many problems with this, what I see in the staff report. Fire evacuation has been brought up recently, ingress, egress. Fire evacuation has been brought up recently, ingress, egress, lots of discussion on this tonight. You know, we don't have a good overall look of planning of what, how, I mean, our neighborhoods are being hugely affected by many things. And this is just one more, it's just not compatible with our quiet, peaceful residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have John Buetti, then Renee Roth.
Good evening, council. I just want to piggyback on what Anita said and Mr. Stasi about traffic. Bear in mind that people are going to be arriving at the same time for an event, right? Wedding, wedding starts at 5:00 in the afternoon. People are going to show up at 4:30. That's a lot of cars backed up on a very busy street where traffic flows at a high rate of speed. I think there needs to be a lot of thought put into how traffic will be managed and who's going to manage it.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Renee Roth.
Good evening, council. I'll be brief. My daughter is getting married in March to her childhood sweetheart of 10 years. They've been together. She's getting married in March. She and her fiance looked everywhere to find a place for a small wedding in Ojai. There was nothing to be found. There's no place that would fit within our budget or their budget. And I'm in that mode of how do we find a middle ground that's compatible with people loving to be in our town, wanting to have family gatherings? It could even be a family gathering. Ours is going to be a family gathering. That's all that's really going to be there, a family gathering. Yes, we can worry and nitpick it to death, but in my mind, we've got to figure out how to find that middle ground. We've got to meet people halfway. They're a business in our town. They're trying to do good by our community and provide events where people want to come here and do fun things. So how do we make that possible? How do we engage? And I don't, I don't claim to know all the answers, but I'm trying to create that spirit of let's work together. You can do this many people and you can't do that, and whatever you decide is going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Any comments online?
Yes, ma'am. We currently have two raised hands. First, we'll have Andra, followed by Leslie. Andra, you have the floor.
Hi, folks. This is Andra Bownap. As a Golden West neighbor, I just wanted to register my support for the appeal. I also want to publicly thank the appellant, Rich, for his civic engagement on this issue. That is it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Andra.
Next, we'll have Leslie. Leslie, you have the floor. Leslie, I see you've unmuted. Please speak. We'll give you one more opportunity. I still see you're unmuted. You may. And we'll move on, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can we go back to, you said that before applying for the CUP status, they occasionally had events. So for example, if someone living in Golden West wants to have a wedding, they could still book, there's nothing to, you know, they could make an arrangement, right? That's still, how does that work? The occasional?
So we have had occasional, we've had three temporary use permits on this site. I believe it was in 2022, and they requested a temporary use permit, the, the Capri Hotel did, and they had their wedding event.
And is that, is that a cumbersome process?
No, I mean, and they, an applicant fills out an application, and we have a site plan and the details of the event, and then staff reviews it and, you know, as to its adequacy and goes through a staff level process to be reviewed and considered by the director.
And if I could just chime in here, typically, these take about 30 to 45 days to process. So if we're looking out, if they're looking to have a wedding, it's got to be at least 60 days or, or 90 days out.
People usually plan ahead like that.
A year in advance, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's all. So, yeah, I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, most of these other things are available in town already for locals. So this is for the tourists, I would say mainly, right? The art yoga classes, art class, movie screening, game nights.
So the request-
It's to keep the people on site, it sounds like.
Well, the request does-
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, the request, the, the project description does not state that, that these events are for residents only, or guests only.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so I wanted to say a couple of things. I went to the planning commission meeting where they, where this was approved, and they talked about, they compared the off, the kinds of offerings that they would have with those that they have at the Rancho. So like events for, so some of these events, yoga classes, art classes, et cetera, would be available for local residents. Like there would be, it would be another entertainment option for local residents. And, and they talked about the, you know, that they discussed the sensitivity that they would have for following the rules around parking and making sure that the neighbors were, were satisfied. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering, I think, council member Francina, you were getting to, would, what is this necessary if they can, is that the question that you were getting to?
Yeah, it seems like we have all these things available already. I mean, don't we?
Well, is there, is there a middle ground that we could, like, for example, what Larry suggested of having it for a year, or doing something that would be a temporary, working with the neighbors, working with the, the hotel, you know, working with the properties? Could we have something that would, that would, that would be like a pilot, maybe six months, or, you know, some, something like that? Is there an alternative that we can look at?
Well, that, that would be at the discretion of the, of the city council.
Yeah, there's a couple of options that could be structured. One would be to structure, allow the events on a, on a one-year revocable basis, return in a year to see with an analysis by staff as to how the year has gone, including any complaints and enforcement actions that may have occurred. Another option would be to start to break apart, as Ms. Ozahan, Mrs. Ozahan noted, the event numbers are lower than were in one part of the staff report. Turns out the lower event numbers are in a different part of the staff report, but that could be broken up further, the lines between weekly versus monthly versus annual versus weddings. The council could, for example, choose to approve a certain amount of annual and wedding events and not approve weekly events, see how that goes, and then perhaps invite the applicant to return at some point in the future with a proposal for adding to the events. Start small and expand over time.
Mayor Protem?
So I do think that we need to, that it's important that we address this in the general plan and that those discussions are coming. I do have, put a high value on quiet enjoyment of your neighborhood. And I also have a concern, you know, over just the parking issue, the number of cars would be, you know, cycling through. So, but what I also heard, it, it seems, it would seem to be a shame to be an all-or-nothing kind of proposition. And I, you know, it sounded to me like there's an opportunity, you know, to potentially mediate. And, you know, I would, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to mediate between the neighborhood and the, but I don't think I could do that and still be a-
I would say-
-city council member.
You've got to pick a side, and I suggest you stick with voting.
So that, but, but, and maybe that's something, you know, we should be looking at creating a small commission of mediators so that you can take an issue like this and, because it sounded like both the applicant and the homeowners were kind of interested in figuring out something that works. I mean, because I could see, you know, reducing the, shortening the, the day so that they're not having, you know, music and noise at 10 o'clock at night. What would be reasonable there? I mean, that's something that I think the neighborhood and the, have to talk about. And, and the, the number of events and the number of people, those, those are all things that I think we could come to a point that everybody would be relatively happy. I don't know how we do that as a body, just hearing, you know, the testimony tonight without having some further process. So if Matt's got any ideas on that?
I was just going to jump in. One option would be to continue this matter for 90 days and direct staff, Ms. Michael Russo and Mr. Seber to sit down with the applicant and the appellant, bring them together, create a forum for them to see what, what middle ground can be found that meets the, the needs of the, of the community and the neighborhood, but also enables the business to expand somewhat. And then see if, if that process can create an approach that is supported mostly by both sides and bring that back to council. That'd be an option.
And, and I would just like to modify the way you said that to include not just the applicant, who's one person, but the neighborhood. And we've had, you know-
Right, that's a fair point. Not just the appellant and invite.
We've had like five, you know, five people from the neighborhood as well as from the community, but I would, I, you know, I would tend to support that type of a 90-day pause and to see if the neighbors and the applicant can come to a reasonable spot.
Would you put a motion on the table? You seen that? Let's get, can we get the motion on the table first? And then we can-
Sure. So I'd move to continue for 90 days and direct staff to work with the applicant and the neighbors on whether there are adjustments to what's proposed that would make those satisfied.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember?
Yeah, could, as part of that discussion, could you consider, I don't want to call it permit parking, but something that deters overflow people from parking in the neighborhood.
We can take a look at that option. The classic there is a residential preferential parking system, which some folks very much historically support because it ensures that only people who have a permit can park on designated streets. It also has a common unintended consequence of it complicates those residents' lives in that if you have somebody who want, you need to park on the street, you got to figure out how to get them a permit. But we can have that conversation-
Yeah, and-
-if the motion is approved.
And it could be-
And/or some other options.
It could be just signage at, you know, if you're, is, whatever, you know, how you, there's all kinds of signs-
Yeah.
...related to that.
Signage. The other option is to look at tools for the hotel and its event operators to take on themselves the job of, of enforcing or pushing parking for the events to the designated spaces and not out in the overflow.
Yeah. And, and then the parking lot could be made, made as safe as possible and, and with some kind of landscaping so the lights don't, you know? I don't know if it's possible, but I think we should give it a try. So I don't-
Okay. Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I would support everybody trying to get to yes. Maybe we could ask Mr. Quilci to, kidding, you know? But yes, I, I do think it's, it's worth working towards yes. People of goodwill and honest intentions can usually find a pathway, and it seems like we have both of that on, on, but we have that on both sides. So I, I would support that for sure.
Okay. I'm going to make a call. I appreciate all the neighbors coming out, and I really understand the concerns of the appellant. And I love Kenny, and I know Kenny, and I love the Capri, and it's a great place, and it brings a lot of, you know, wonderful energy and events to our environment, to our town. I think Mr. Miley had a, Bill had a great point, where commerce is winning over residents' concerns frequently, and that is a concern of mine because we all moved here for the quality of life, for the most part, which means quiet, calm, peaceful, and nature. And we are in the middle of a general plan process, and so it does seem to be that we're doing a little piecemealing here, and that it doesn't really make sense to make big decisions when we're in the middle of a general plan process. And that, you know, we've asked staff to, to bring tourism impact into that process. And this is huge because this is about bringing more tourists, more traffic into our community. And, you know, I thought, Andrew Stasi, your point about the offset of bed space is really important because it's taking up beds from people who would come here, for example, for the music festival and need a room that they can't because there is an event. And it's turning, you know, our hotels, if they turn into event centers, we're changing what they're there for. They're there for hotel rooms and not to hold event after event after event. I do love the idea of coming together and negotiating with both sides. I just think that we really need to be careful about protecting our residents and not letting just, you know, these are all great ideas, you know? It'd be great to have a wedding there, and it'd be great to have, you know, a yoga retreat there, but it affects the 7,500 people who live in this town. So I think I support negotiation and collaboration, so I, I think that's a great idea. I just really want to stress that we need to protect the residents here.
And I just wanted to add one thing to, to Kenny and the team at Capri and Hummingbird, that this, our delay doesn't preclude you from applying for temporary use permits or temporary event permits? Is that, is that correct?
It is, I mean, it is discretionary. It's a separate application, it's a separate process.
Right, but, but there is, that is a process that they could go through if they wanted something in the, in the middle, if they wanted to have something in the middle in between now and 90 days from now.
Yes, so for, for instance, if they had already booked for a wedding event to take place and they were banking on, on this application and this process, could they go through a TUP as a separate application, as a separate process? Yes. However, if that is, that also holds itself to appeal processes, which then would delay that action and then potentially come to planning commission and then potentially this body, so.
And we would expect that any TUP application in this interim period would have to include very, very robust protection for the community to have, I would think, a chance of that.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion in a second. Ready for a roll call, please?
Mayor, I'd like to ask the motion maker and staff, did the motion include the event permit enforcement element that council member Francina recommended?
As one of many things to be discussed, yeah.
Parking can be discussed amongst the whole variety of issues that would-
Let's recite the motion as I understand it. We have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitman with a second by council member Lang to continue this item for 90 days and direct staff to meet with the applicant, appellant, neighborhood representatives to create an approach and adjustments agreed upon and brought back to council and include an event parking enforcement element. Roll call.
I have a question.
Yep.
If they can't agree-
Then we'll come back to council.
Okay.
Roll call. Mayor Protem Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to discussion item number three, interactive speed monitoring signs, native tree planting, and life extending care of native trees. So I'm really excited about this item. I feel like the Lorax. The Lorax, speaking for the trees. As many of you know, at the end of August, city council voted to not to pay for a motorcycle cop, and this is a suggestion from many members-
from many members of the community, um, who are requesting that we get data first, that we collect data from all over town to figure out where the problems are. And then we can, it's a much more creative way, I think, looking at the police force. And once we have the data, we can send the police to specific spots that need the data gathering. Um, in the last four years, I've had so many people requesting for money for trees. Um, March 2020, we passed Measure C and a big chunk of that was supposed to go to trees. Of course, that was the month that COVID hit. So we had, the universe had other plans for us. So we're back now with, with the possibility of, of giving, um, care to something that I think is important to everyone who lives in this town. Um, and for years also, we have been asking the question, where are the young people? Uh, we really need to get them involved. The mayor's youth council has gotten students from the six different high schools in town involved in council meetings. It's also important to empower you, young people to live into boots-on-the-ground climate solutions, and this is one of them. So before us tonight is an opportunity to provide funding for a youth-led climate action item. As many of us know, we live in the fastest-warming county in the lower 48 states. The average temperature in Ventura County has increased 4.7 degrees Fahrenheit since pre-industrial times. This tree care and planting program will increase Ojai's shade canopy and reduce temperatures in our community. Funding this project will, will now, will get trees in the ground now and provide life-extending care for our native heritage trees throughout town. I know it's easy to delay something like this because it takes a long time for trees to grow. If we don't do it today, when are we going to do it? Uh, the Green Valley Project has a history of success engaging youth to restore ecosystems in Ojai so they can provide habitat for abundant wildlife and improve Ojai's resilience to drought, fire, and climate change. The Green Valley Project also strives to create future generations of environmental leaders. The young people are involved in every stage of restoration, from the collection of native seeds to the planting and long-term care of the trees. Pro, projects include oak woodland restoration and pollinator habitat planting in the Oaks Meadow preserves on school campuses, along Middle Stewart Canyon Creek, and open spaces throughout Ojai. Um, I have spoken to the Green Valley Project, uh, and I've also, um, worked a lot with them. I have attended their meetings and councils and, um, taught them yoga classes. And it's a really incredible organization. They do incredible work and they're dedicated, uh, if this goes through, to just use this on, for trees. Uh, the other half of the money, the suggestion is to give that, to make a fund, a tree fund. Uh, the city manager and I met with three representatives from Ojai Trees and we talked about it and that, uh, came up. That was the solution that was suggested. So I'm excited about that too. And I'm excited to, uh, also collect the data of where the speeding is actually happening. Um, and I think the philosophy of education first and data-driven enforcement approach second is, uh, is a really good plan. So with that, um, I'll take any questions from council.
Um, I, I guess I'll start. Um, so why didn't we get an administrative report on this? I mean, why is it written by you as opposed to a staff report that would, um, indicate that the staff had, had also delved into the issue?
Um, I volunteered to write it. I, I've worked with staff. I talked to the city manager about this, uh, quite a bit. And we met with Ojai Trees, so I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Um, well, it's just unusual process. Did you work with any other council members to bring this forward?
Um, council member Francine and I have talked about, we didn't talk about this week, but we have talked about this item.
Well, I, I don't, maybe, maybe, maybe not, maybe not specifically as stated here. We have talked about, um, trees. I mean, um, I, 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 can I, well, I'll, I have some comments, but it's, or this is the time for questions.
Questions. Okay.
I have a lot of, I.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, any other questions or still on questions?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I do like, my, my concern is process here, that there's been, there's nothing here that indicates that city staff or city organizations, public works, um, have, uh, have weighed in at all on this. So for instance, Prior Toys proposed interactive speed monitoring sign locations. How were those chosen? Um, so.
Um, and we do have a representative from, uh, the people who brought this forward. Karina Wright is here. So if you have any specific questions about that process, um, so they, they did, uh, meet with, uh, our chief of police.
So, so I do, Karina Wright has worked on this. So have other people worked on this? I mean, I'm just, who, who, remember we had that whole discussion about disclosure?
Sure. Yeah. There was a group of people and Karina, if you want to come forward and talk about sort of the process, there were four people who came who would like to make this happen and they also gathered signatures.
Um, okay. So.
Do you want to?
Um, yeah, sure. Come on. Well, I think relevant is who the four people.
Karina Wright, um, Carolyn Bondriska, Derek Polteny, and Tom Francis.
I'm, I'm curious when we get to give our comments.
Uh, we'll take public comment.
Yeah, yeah, we'll take public comment. I mean.
We're still on questions for council.
Yeah, this is just questions for, and, and I don't really have a question other than.
So this, you know, this is pretty, um, informal how this came to be. One, what really triggered it for me was the expenditure of the motorcycle cop on the budget. And it just really, um, reminded me that we had this Measure C money that we voted on in March of 2020 that raised the tourism tax so that we would make more money for things like trees. So with everything leading up to that in the past few months, you know, new electric vehicles, new this, new that, I just started thinking, we have got to reroute these funds. We don't need more police. We don't know who's speeding. I did some research on speeding in towns of this size and more police study after study did not show that it stopped speeding. So that was a really big key factor for me.
Yeah. So this is, this is turning into, um, more than is appropriate for the expression.
All right. We're still on, uh, questions from council.
Right. So, so, um, my questions are, I, I was concerned about how the process came about, why public works wasn't involved in this. Um, it is a large expenditure of money, uh, yet there was no RFP. There's been no discussion, um, you know, about this. So, uh, my questions are all process, my, my questions and concerns are all process-related and, um, I'm not comfortable with how the process went forward, uh, just because it hasn't involved, as far as I can tell, any city administrative staff. I know you met with the, with.
City manager.
Yeah. But, but city manager, my, my question still remains, why didn't the city staff do an evaluation and a report? I know you offered to, to, uh, do it yourself, but, but these things are supposed to be vetted and impartial and unbiased by, you know, by the city staff. So that, that's a concern of mine. And that you didn't really work with any other council member is also a concern of mine. I know you might've discussed trees with Ms. France, with, uh, council member Francina. So, um, that's what I was trying to get out of this. And I think that I do have, um, some understanding of this. But to me, it should have been an RFP process.
Still on questions. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to clarify, when this was first on the agenda, uh, in August, was it? August 27th, Rachel and I were the, I, I didn't speak to anyone about it except for Rachel. Okay. And at that, on that day, um, I thought that we, the city attorney corrected me, I thought we could get those speed, by now we would have three months of data. That was my, my intent. If we had approved the speed monitors, but we were told that that wasn't on the agenda, as I recall. So now it has come back. Now, my dilemma is that since that time, I, the, the, um, complaints about e-bikes have reached such a height and the close calls that, and with the new work that's happening with the ATP, uh, our so-called shared use, uh, by, I mean, I have, yeah, but, but other people made statements, so I'm making mine. So you can kind of see.
Can you wait till we get back to discussion?
Yes, I can. I can wait. But I also, I, I'm also, yeah. Okay. I'll just wait. I'll just.
Okay.
Are we?
We're finished with questions. Okay.
Actually, I just need clarification. So how were the interactive speed monitoring sign locations chosen? I didn't quite get that. How were they chosen?
Um, the group of people who put this.
The four group? Okay. The four citizens.
And also met with, uh, Chief Newman.
And you met with Chief Newman?
They did.
They did?
Yes.
And when I looked at it, it made sense. I, I, I live and work on North Signal and that made, I mean, I know the town. The list made sense. Yeah.
Um, let's go ahead and move on to public comment?
Yep.
Uh, let's begin with Larry Steingold, then Renee Roth, and then Karina Wright.
Larry Steingold, thank you. Um, this is brilliant. Okay. We're going to have speed monitors that have no cameras, that have radar, that will have a slippery slope, two cameras, because they're cheaper than police. So eventually these monitors will become camera radar for speeding, which is, we have lots of speeders, but nobody here wants to pay tickets. Nobody wants to not park in red zones. Nobody, California stops. It's an art form here. They don't even slow down. Okay. They just blissfully drive through. Okay. And we do have speeders. Okay. I live on Drown and Pleasant. Uh, you both do. Okay. They don't stop a daily. They make a nice long turn. The people on Drown, no, they speed. People know where the speeders are. The chief recommended, and the city manager, who you're paying a lot of money to, recommended a motorcycle cop. And I understand years ago, the motorcycle cop got chased out of town because he wrote all the tickets. Great. We only need that for one year because then everybody understands what a two-by-four is between their eyes. Okay. But does the chief think that this will slow traffic? Because once the, those lights and blinking lights and signs all go up and you have all the data, you're going to move the signs and then the police officer with a radar gun will be sitting on top of Kuyama because he'll know where all the speeders are because we have all the data. Either we're after speeders or we're not speeding. It doesn't matter. Do something. This is fine. But it's brilliant because now we're just going to morph into cameras and radar and instant tickets in two years. Because how are we going to stop the speeders? The police are getting four and a half million dollars. We get two cops. Are we now going to have another cop or a police officer? Um, do the speed checks? Write the tickets? No, that's 350 grand. This is a hundred thousand dollars with internet to the automatics, uh, ticket writers, just like they have at the cameras on the intersections. And the trees, as long as they're all planted within city limits, on city property, or even on private property in the city. Okay. With whatever organization is going to do it. But if we're, but this is a brilliant thing for speeding. Start with the blinking lights and then we'll just go to cameras.
Wow. Thank you, Larry.
Can I ask Larry something? Larry, in all seriousness, I don't know if you're being sarcastic or if you're serious.
Regarding?
The, that.
Your word, brilliance.
Yes.
As it sounds like you're being sarcastic.
No, no. It's not sarcastic. It is brilliant. Because what you're doing is you're collecting data, where the speeders are, and then you're going to remove the cameras and have the police go back with radar guns.
Why do you have to remove?
Because why else would you have the, why else would you want to know where speeding takes place unless you're going to stop the speeding?
We're going to keep going with public comment. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, next we have Renee, yeah.
Well, you're great.
Renee Roth, then we have Karina Wright, and then Bill Wirick, who's not here. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, uh, Mr. City Attorney, I'm really surprised that you allowed something like this to be on the agenda, first of all, because I'd like three minutes to talk about the traffic cops and the speeding. And then I'd like another three minutes to talk about the trees because they're really separate issues and it's really not good governance to combine so many things into one agenda item late in the evening at the last meeting that the Betsy Styx is going to present her legacy for the city of Ojai and the students of Ojai. I really appreciate your intention, Betsy. I know your heart is in a good place. I really do. But this is not good governance. This is not how we take $250,000 and say, I want it to go to trees. And it's going to be good for our kids. That is not how we do budget changes and budget adjustments. The city manager put together a mid-year budget, uh, report in, in February of last year, and it had a lot of data in it about our revenues have changed, our expenditures have changed. He put a lot of time and effort into it and that's what's needed if you're going to make line item changes from a public safety item over to a trees and, you know, we're going to save the environment kind of thing. So there's a little, there's incoherence in what you're trying to do. They don't make sense. And, and I also want to talk about speeding. So I don't have time to do that. The other thing is I like our public works director. I think we have confidence in a public works director. Lindy Palmer is very good. She knows how to issue RFPs. She knows how to get things done. Part of what I see is a problem with our tree canopy, uh, issues is that Ojai Trees has already planted, I don't know how many trees, and maybe Garrett will tell us, um, but half of them have died. Half of them have actually died. And so we've got dead trees out there that need to be removed. And I would like to see our public works director actually take ownership of our trees. Have our public works director take ownership so that our trees can be maintained and managed and respected and valued by our city staff. And that should be acknowledged in the budget. And by the way, there's lots of Measure C money to also help with fire mitigation. And that's really what this money should be used for right now at this point in time. Now, I did give you a plant list and I only have two more minutes, but here's a fire-resistant plant list and I would like the city to consider.
Thank you, Renee. Uh, next we have Karina Wright, then Bill Miley, and then Tom Francis.
Thank you, Mayor Styx, council, city staff. Um, I'm really glad, obviously, that you brought this forward on the agenda. Thank you for that. And I support it 100%. And I just want to clarify that this is a follow-up to the vote to not spend the money on the motorcycle cop, just in case anybody's confused by this. This plan will help save money, will gather crucial data to target speeding and bring more native trees to Ojai. By the Green Valley Project agreeing to work with the city on this, we're making an already great idea even better. Planting trees, engaging young people, and caring for the environment is at the heart of their mission. A couple of years ago, my daughter joined the Green Valley Project's youth council when she was a junior at Nordoff. The experience was incredibly rewarding. Not only did she get to meet other students from all the neighboring high schools here in Ojai, she saw firsthand what they could do to impact the environment locally. Together, they planted pollinator ecosystems, AKA small gardens. And it was extremely positive because it was tangible and they were super proud of it. And this was right around when the museum had their exhibition that pointed out that Ventura County was the fastest-growing county in the U.S. So it was very meaningful for her and for her peers. And, you know, planting native trees isn't just an essential step towards climate mitigation. It's also a gift to our community. These trees will beautify our neighborhoods, provide shade on hot days, and improve our air quality, among many other things. A project like this will also give our youth a sense of pride and connection to Ojai. It's a chance for them to create a lasting impact in their hometown, show their stewardship, and engage in their community. and engage in their community, something we truly need. With Ventura County warming so rapidly, we need actions like this now more than ever. This one tangible step we can take to ensure the next generation enjoys cooler, greener streets and a community that takes pride in its role in fighting climate change. I urge you to vote to strengthen Ojai's climate resilience and reallocate these funds. Thank you, and thank you for your service, Mayor Sticks and Councilmember Francina. You will be missed.
Thank you, Karina. Next we have Bill Miley, and then Anita Cram, and then Michelle Thomas.
How can one be against speed reduction, native tree planting, and care? I'm in support. However, there are some splinters on how this was done. Couple of technical issues to look at. One, there's no information on the tree community petition. Who authored it? What did it say? How was it promoted? I know nothing about it. Sounds like it was specially promoted to a narrow group of folks. Was it initiated by a council member? Please tell the public. Two, I'm not against this proposal, but I'm disturbed by the lack of information. How, what, when, where, how, how much? And a sample of the petition, sample of it. This is an example of me, oh, excuse me, of being, not being transparent. How was it initiated? Three, also, what impact does the funding have on the very long running function relationship of Ojai Trees? I used to help plant them. They have done volunteer tree planting for many, many years. Has the city spoken to them for the impact this new funding will have on their efforts? And four, this seems like a new vision, version of how to spend unallocated monies from the 24-25 budget. I'd like the plan review, the speed impact or feedback mechanisms. I'd like the plan review with speed feedback data, so you know where it is happening, and then the time and the days. And then I also like the selective traffic enforcement based on that data. That's great. And, and last, there is a state-funded, probably the Department of Motor Vehicle, project in five California cities to track and record vehicle sounds on the street, with vehicle information collected, license plates, to identify noise violating vehicles for enforcement. We need that also. It's demanding to listen to loud mufflers, purposeful engine acceleration for muffler sounds, trashing maintained vehicles with noisy parts, and loud commercial trucks gearing up and down on Ojai Avenue, especially if you're in an outside restaurant. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. And just to clarify, the city manager and I met with three board members of Ojai Trees. And, you know, I can't, in terms of who signed the petition, I think that I can't release that for, okay.
Just saying, how was it done? Where's the copy of it so we can see it? Who initiated it?
Well, as I said, four members of our community initiated it. Okay, let's keep going. Next we have Anita Cram, and then Michelle Thomas, and then Garrett Clifford.
Hello again. So I would like to suggest that in addition to the road signs, that the city implement some safety measures for e-bikes, and one, of course, is the safety training, and the other would be a license tag that would have to, these are motorized vehicle, or, you know, motorized moving things on the street that can go pretty fast, 30 miles an hour, that they be required to have a license plate on them as part of this safety training license plate, and that, that way, it could help the community to identify who these offenders are and report them. In addition, I think it's wonderful that we get youth off of e-bikes and end up planting trees. And I think that the city really needs to hire an arborist, and a portion of this money, you know, was it Measure C that was passed? It's not like this is coming up out of thin air. It's like it's something that was supposed to have been done a long time ago that has not been done, and, you know, voters voted on this money to go to trees, and my understanding is that it's not, so it's high time it did. So this isn't coming out of thin air as far as an allocation of funding. So this arborist needs to be hired, a portion of this money, because if you're going to plant trees, you need some expertise in it of a highly qualified arborist. If these youth are going to be taking care of trees, they need to be doing it under the direction of a highly qualified herbali, herbalist, I'm an herbalist, arborist. And so I think that would be a good thing. I mean, oak trees are fire-resistant landscape. They're, they're very good at it, and with, you know, the climate change, fastest warming county, we need to act. So thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Next we have Michelle Thomas, then Garrett Clifford, then Andy Gilman.
Wow, thank you. Good evening. My name is Michelle Thomas. I've lived here for over 40 years. You have a reckless driving problem here in this valley. It's not just the city who's responsible, the county is too, but you need to deal with it, especially if you're thinking about approving events, more events. Monday, driving home on Creek Road from Ventura, guy gets behind me, he's really aggressively tailgating me. He scared me, I couldn't get over. He finally passes me on the double yellow, practically scraping the paint off, I mean, he was being aggressive, he wanted me to get over. He flipped me off, no big deal. Do you know what we both passed while we were driving down Creek Road and all this was going on? A blinking interactive speed sign. So sadly, I caught up to this driver again when I got into city limits because he was tailgating two other drivers who were going the speed limit as you go through the winding end of town. This was frightening, it was extremely dangerous. I've witnessed three other incidents of reckless driving myself, and I dare say many in the room have also witnessed them. Previous to five years ago, I've never seen a driver like this. So, once again, I'm asking for this council to invest in traffic enforcement, and yes, hire a traffic cop. The kind of driver that was behind me is not learning anything from a blinking speeding sign. He might flip it off. That's it. And I'm losing my notes now, but just to think that you're capturing all the reckless driving and speeding by having fixed monitors, I'm not sure if that makes sense to me, but other people know more than I do. I am interested. I received this agenda item, and it was referring to a petition, and then I was looking for, isn't that all public record when we're deciding stuff on input from, you know, from the community? I didn't see anything. In fact, my bottom line is, we need a cop to help us in the city, we need one in the county. But why does this have to be about public safety or trees? Why can we only have public safety or trees, which obviously we need, but why can't we have both? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next we have Garrett Clifford, then Andy Gilman.
Hi. We've been promised, I'm the president of Ojai Trees, and we've been promised that we were going to get tree, tree money back when the bed tax went through, and Greg Grant was here, and we were getting excited. It just never happened, and then the Tree Committee fell apart, and things just sort of dissolved from there. But we've made it through this tough time, and we're, things are getting better, so I'm excited. We planted a lot of trees, we planted a lot of street trees, we've had street tree planting programs where we've gotten grants to plant them, and we did it, and it's a lot of work. This is a tough community to do anything in, as you guys have probably experienced. Planting a street tree is no different. We've had street trees cut down, we've had street trees driven over. Not everybody likes a street tree, so you just can't go out and put trees in the ground in neighborhoods and think you're going to, that everything's going to be fine. They need to be, it needs to be planned, and I've forwarded all of our documents that we used during our last street tree planting to a number of people. You guys all have this information. It's a process that needs to be directed by somebody with some arboreal knowledge, and I love Anita's comments about who's going to take care of these trees, who's going to direct the people, these, these young kids, and, and young people that are going to be doing this need direction. And so we need somebody at the city who's going to take ownership of this. Ojai Trees has done a lot of this work for 18 years. We've, we've sort of supplied our numbers and gotten us free city status, but this, this needs to be a process that's owned by the city and the Public Works Department, Joseph Padilla. Public Works is great, we've had great success working with them, but we're still, we're still lose street trees that we plant. We plant trees in the park, and sometimes they don't even get watered, they're taken care of during those first couple of years when they're very sensitive. So it really needs to be a process that's owned by the city, that's directed by city personnel, and that they take responsibility for. And that sure would be nice if there was an arborist on staff. The crew, they do a good job. I've planted trees with the crew. They're expensive, but, you know, they get the work done, but they need supervision and direction. So I like the idea of getting them involved in watering trees, and caring for trees, and planting trees. So we're heading down the right path. Keep up the good work, and we'll get, thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Garrett.
Okay. So, one of the questions I have that doesn't need to be answered right now, but unless you can answer it, I am not understanding why this is, why some of this money isn't allocated for you, and why you can't, the, the high school kids can volunteer with you just as well, correct?
We don't want the money. We want this, we plant trees, there's no one looking after them.
Okay, that's-
I don't have the, we have, we're all volunteers, and we don't have a volunteer staff that can patrol the neighborhoods on a weekly basis, keep their eye on all the young trees that have been planted, make sure they're watered, you know.
Okay, that's what I need to clarify, because I heard someone say, tell me if it's correct, that 50% of the trees have died? We can't just gloss over that.
That's an, that's an aggressive number, but far more of our street trees die than the trees I plant on private property. We plant trees on private property, we're, we got a 95% success rate. We plant trees in the park or on the streets. You know, there's the Arbor Day tree from last April that we planted, it's not doing well on the Kuyama Square.
Can I, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. Ojai Trees plants the trees, and if they're on private property, then the private property owner takes care of the trees, but when you plant on public property, that is the city's responsibility?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. And I just want to clarify for Councilwoman, that we met, the city manager and I, manager and I met with three representatives of Ojai Trees, and this was your request to put it into a fund. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next we have Andy Gilman, then Tom Francis, and then John Buetti.
Thank you, Council and staff. I appreciate Garrett being here, and I reflect a lot of what he's saying and like it. Just a few things once again. Chief Newman is here, who had asked for the motorcycle officer on enforcement and also the city manager, but we're all getting into the business of knowing law enforcement better than the experts. I'm just saying it one more time, that I just think it's a mistake, and then if we say, well, we're going to legitimize what we're saying by asking Chief Newman where to put the interactive monitors, as if that makes it okay, but she already asked what she want, what she thought was going to be the good job, so I would love to hear from her. And I have heard every single day, literally, how big of a problem e-bikes are, just to say. It's something that we're definitely going to have to face. I don't understand why this item gets presented as an either-or, since we had the motorcycle officer turned down, so now let's spend the money on something that was turned down towards this. That's not the way we do anything else. In other words, we have an ordinance that we decide not to take up, so we're going to spend the money some other way. I, I just don't see why, first of all, why it's either-or, and separately, why is it instead of? It makes no sense to me. But what I would love to do is say, how could this be, become part of something much larger, which the idea is totally fine, but why can't it be something that we say, we authorize staff and give them the money to take care of the trees that get planted? That's the initiative, it seems to me, so I just don't see what the rush is. Why not have it be part of a larger initiative? And I'm just going to, I would love to bring back the officer again, because I do think enforcement is needed, but why not bring this as something stronger and more thoughtful without all the procedural questions, and also get the city in the business of taking care of the trees that Ojai Trees puts out? Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Next we have Tom Francis, and then John Buetti.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and Councilmembers. Thank you for your service, thank you for staying here so many times, so many nights, and I guess I just want to start by saying, the Green Valley Project likes to take care of trees, not just plant them. And also, my understanding is that the way this is proposed is that the trees are not going to necessarily all be planted on the streets, they're going to be planted on private property, on, on any property that has a willing property owner that wants the trees there. So potentially, a lot of the trees could end up on private land and cared for by the property owner, or a combination of the property owner and Green Valley Project, or the crew. I also want to remind the council that, again, that disproportionately large share of the deferred road paving liability has been covered by the Measure C hotel room tax that was supposed to also cover tree planting and care. This agenda item helps compensate for that fact. Many of the young people in our community are demoralized by the fact that the incoming president is anti-climate. Tonight, you have an opportunity to support our youth that are concerned for the future of their planet. Tonight's agenda item isn't just an alternative to the motorcycle cop, it is better because it saves a lot of money while also continuously capturing data on where and what time, where and at what time of day speeding is actually happening. And nothing in this proposal is about cameras. Okay, so, over 250 people signed on to a letter, so this is a sign-on letter, not a petition, I keep hearing the term petition, it's not a petition, it's called a sign-on letter, okay? This letter is supporting an education-first, data-driven enforcement-second approach, while also 32 individuals wrote thank you letters to council members that voted no to hire a motorcycle cop. They're in this box right here. I continue to hear about the $4 million delta, which I believe is now down to 3.4 million. Contrary to popular belief, this is not a budget surplus, considering the fact that there is an approximately $13 million road paving backlog liability. Therefore, we cannot afford a motorcycle cop if we want to pave our roads. I strongly encourage the council to vote yes on this item, as is saying yes to our young people, yes to data-driven policing, and yes to cooling our town by increasing our native tree shade canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next we have John Buetti.
Through the mayor, should we be accepting materials here?
So we have to take in anything anybody wants to give us. Once it's given to us, it is a public record.
Right.
Available for review by anybody.
Great.
Hi. So I just have a brief comment about the speed monitoring signs. I respectfully disagree with, was it Michelle? Yes, I disagree with Michelle. I understand that she was, you know, a victim of road rage, that this person had no intention of paying attention to those signs. I do, and my guess would be that if you polled the people in our community- And my guess would be that if you polled the people in our community, when you, when they see those signs, if they're law-abiding, they pay attention to them. I certainly do. If I'm speeding, which I actually rarely do, but if I am, they help me. And I think that they probably help most of the people in the community. So this is money, in my opinion, that's very well spent.
No, please, we're not having, okay, thank you, John. Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, mayor, we have two raised hands. First, we'll have Star Child, followed by Andrea. Star Child, you have the floor? Star Child, you may unmute.
Hi. Hi, mayor and council. I wanted to say that I think that this proposal is, has merit, but it's premature to approve it today. We need a request for proposal, for not just, to get a proposal for not just crew, but any other interested organization. I think that we deserve the vendor who offers the best value, not the vendor that is most connected or is most well-known. We also need to know a little bit more about the, this sign-on letter. Were the two hundred and fifty people residents or voters of Ojai, it would be nice to include the letter in the report. Also, there seems to be some confusion between the mayor and the proponents of the sign-on letter. It looks like, in the mayor's report, she said it was a petition, but Mr. Francis says it wasn't a petition. I think we need to get some clarification on that. Also, we need to know which private properties might get these free taxpayer-funded trees that Mr. Francis talked about. Since the proponents met with Chief Newman, and Chief Newman is apparently there, I can't see her, I would like to hear from her as to whether she supports this proposal, to hear from her whether she supports the locations the proposal outlines, and also whether she still supports having a motorcycle cop. That might be best done in a report from her, or that could be included in a staff report in the future. Also, it's worth remembering that two, that when we think about the vote for the motorcycle cop, two of those council members who voted against the motorcycle cop are leaving, and one of the incoming council members, or the future mayor of Ojai campaigned for having a motorcycle cop. It seems very likely that a future council may want to have the motorcycle cop, and doing this proposal right now would take any funding away from that future council. I think it's fair to research this more, and then let a future council make a decision about how they would like to spend the money, and after getting a more thorough, a report from staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Star Child.
Next, we have Andrea. Andrea, you have the floor?
Hi, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. This is Andrea Bownap, City of Ojai. As an observer of government, I wanted to chime in and say that this is a very strange way to go about policymaking. It is problematic from a governance standpoint that the staff report refers to a petition with two hundred and fifty signatures from community members, but provides no verification of those signatures. We did just hear clarified that it was a sign-on letter, okay, that underscores the need for professional staff reports. We're talking about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget expenditure. It's also problematic that we're making decisions about traffic, traffic enforcement, apparently based on feedback from a small group of community volunteers, with no transparency. I love trees. Trees are important. Climate action is crucial, but I thought we were talking about traffic enforcement. There is a false choice here. From a procedural standpoint, this is all very strange, and from a governance standpoint, it is quite problematic. That said, I salute your efforts. I appreciate your time. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Andrea.
That's all, mayor.
Okay, all right, we will move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll start. I agree that this is highly problematic, and what it seems to me is that an ad hoc, an ad hoc committee was formed, with none of us knowing anything about it. I just learned that some of these trees might be on private property. This is, this is way, way, way premature, and not to have the city involved, I think, is a huge mistake. I think it was mentioned that, you know, we should, this should be owned by Public Works. They need to take responsibility for the trees that we plant. I honestly feel that this is a much larger issue, and we should be looking at, at fire hardening as part of this. So I would expand it out to have trees be part of the fire hardening as well, because I think that we need to do both of those. But, you know, having four members of the community, and I know that the, that the city manager was with you, but to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with, you know, basically no member of council, other than the mayor involved in this, and, you know, saying that crew is gonna do it. It's great to involve youth, and we can involve them, but this needs to have a way more structure to it. It's a lot of money, and it's a big responsibility that we all want to invest in. This proposal, we give the money to crew, what is, and then they go out and they do it? What does that even mean? What are they, what are they doing? Where, with trees? Where are they planting them? Who's overseeing it? How are they figuring out which trees to do what with? You know, it, it's a great intent, but there's just no, there's no there, there. There's no skeleton of a plan. And once again, I do believe that, you know, it's confusing with the interactive signs. These issues need, these need to be separated and dealt with separately. It's like we have a, it's like, okay, we have a lump of money, let's figure out the three, the three main things we wanna do with that lump of money. I find this upsetting, actually, that there was no, there was no city involvement. I know that the city manager went to meetings, but there's no staff report, there's nothing unbiased. And once again, you know, an ad hoc committee of four citizens that we knew nothing about came up with this plan, and then is proposed under the guidance, you know, written by the mayor. I don't see how we can possibly approve this. We need an RFP, we need to involve Lindy Palmer, we need to think even broader. Do we want fire hardening? We are gonna revisit the, you know, and, and I think that Star Child's recommendation that we talk to the chief and, and get some feedback on these locations, you know, I, so I, I can't at all support this. You know, right after, I, I think it was mentioned, that the, the staff report, or the mayor's report, says a petition has been circulated, signed by two hundred and fifty community residents. Is that evidence that this is supported? Or is that just, you know, what is, what even is that? We don't even know what they signed. So, I just, I would support something much broader, that, that dealt with fire hardening and that dealt with the planting of trees. Nobody objects to the planting of trees. You know, it's the process and how we're gonna actually monitor what trees get planted where, and who's gonna do the follow-up, and do we want the city ultimately to have the responsibility of taking care of the trees that, to date, you know, perhaps they haven't felt was the onus on them. We need to, we need to give them that for long-term sustainability on trees. So, yeah, I mean, I remember when this came up, and I remember, you know, the three suggestions that were made about what we could do with the money by Mr. Francis, and then I heard them repeated by the mayor, word for word. So, once again, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with an ad hoc committee of four community members that nobody knew anything about, except for perhaps the city manager. So that, that's my, we need an RFP, we need the city involved, we need to know what we're actually doing here, so, thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, before you start running my time, I've got a question. Anita brought up, Anita Cram brought up the issue of having a city arborist. And I have a vague understanding that Jan Skow is our city arborist, but is it correct that his, he's limited in, in what he does to what, the health of trees on city property, and nothing more? I like the idea that we would have an arborist at least taking a second set of eyes, looking at what developers are proposing for the health of trees. I have a lot of confidence in Jan Skow, and I know he's not the, the only great arborist in the community, but I would, you know, I would like to see us create a bigger role for an arborist. And so I think when I eventually make a motion, I'm gonna move that we have staff bring back the idea of expanding the role of the arborist to be more comprehensive for the urban forest and for projects. So, the, I think when we addressed the idea of a traffic officer, it's, it's a misconception that we were addressing speeding. Speeding was one issue. We were also addressing e-bikes, which are not gonna be impacted at all by these monitoring devices. We were addressing, you know, moving violations. I've personally seen so many absurd U-turns in driving through the city, rolling stops, passing on double yellow lines. These are all things that a monitoring device is not gonna tell us anything, it's not gonna collect any data. I also spent some time reading about these monitoring devices. And if you go to a site that's sponsored by one of the companies that makes the devices, they say this is, you know, the miracle cure. But if you look at engineer, you know, traffic engineers and the industry looking, the traffic safety people, they say these are useful devices in conjunction with traffic enforcement. If you don't have an enforcement officer to deal with the data, then you're not gonna get much value. So I think the other point is that we're, I wrote down, unless Mr. Gilman changes his mind, we will be hiring a traffic officer. And it sounds like he's not changing his mind. And, you know, I've also talked to another council member who's going to be, you know, coming on, and she's also very pro-traffic officer. So, rather than spend money on these monitoring devices, I think we table that until the new council addresses traffic investment. Now, I don't wanna throw cold water on the, what I thought was the real concept behind what we're doing here tonight. I don't see the two issues as being a one or the other. I think that we should, we probably have a hundred percent support for supporting tree health, supporting planting of trees, and improving the, you know, safety of our, our urban forest. And I'm a hundred percent in favor of allocating money towards doing that. You know, by the way, just, you know, so we get some details in the record, what, what the ballot told voters is that the money was going to be used for capital improvement and maintenance projects, including street paving, fire mitigation, code enforcement, and climate change mitigation. So I think that improving our treatment and health of our trees is going to support that fire mitigation and the climate change mitigation. By the way, Santa Barbara just came out with a report where they had a street that was lined with these, you know, some form of pines that got, you know, really old and unruly, and they were deemed to be a fire hazard, and so they went through a big study about what kind of trees should we replace these with in order to reduce the fire risk. They picked oak trees as the most fire-resistant tree. And so if, you know, if we want to address fire safety in our community, one of the strongest things we can do is, is take a smart approach to our oak trees. I hear all these horror stories about people who are being told they have to cut their oak trees way back, and that is, if you talk to people who know trees, number one, trees don't catch houses on fire, houses catch trees on fire. Well, excuse me, I said that wrong. Oak trees don't catch houses on fire. It's houses that catch oak trees on fire. And, and so if we cut the trees way back, which are actually providing, you know, good shelter, we're actually doing damage to those trees to an extent that they may not survive. That's what I keep hearing. So that's another reason for me wanting to have an arborist play a bigger role in what we're doing. So what I'm going to propose with the twenty seconds I have left, is that we break these two issues apart, issues apart. That we table anything about traffic safety tonight, that we ask staff to come back with a comprehensive report on what we can do to improve the health of our, of our.
Do you wanna just, can you finish?
Yeah, I'll finish, I'll finish my motion. So that we, that we, that we have staff bring back a report and a proposal about spending money on a tree program. I welcome the participation of Ojai Trees and anybody else, but, and that we consider at a future meeting how to improve our program for the health and safety of our oak trees, and to include in there a discussion about how we might expand the role of our arborist to help us manage that.
Okay. Who would like to speak next?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, okay.
Would you accept a friendly amendment that we attempt to integrate our youth as much as possible in the process? Or is that just irrelevant?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm, I actually, I'd also consider, well, I don't, I don't wanna go beyond, yes, I will consider that amendment.
After we do that, since we have these two items before us, when we're all done with that, I want to consider a motion on addressing the traffic safety, because that's an emergency every bit as much as the trees. I mean, it's bad. It's really, really bad, when people daily tell me how they almost hit a kid, and now that it's dark early, it's just worse. I mean, I find it absurd that there are parents that allow kids to ride their bikes without a light. I mean, what is wrong with?
The only thing that we can vote on tonight, and I'll let the city attorney correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing we can vote on is purchasing these monitors, and I agree a hundred percent that we do need to bring back the traffic safety issue.
Okay, so I can do that at the end of the meeting, a comprehensive traffic safety report that includes every aspect of traffic safety, traffic calming, the speed monitors, the traff, the traffic police, a place for, for kids to ride their, you know, I, I don't, I think part of that is to look at why are kids doing all these tricks in the middle of the street? Why don't they have a place to do it? All of that is part of it. You have to look at it holistically.
Yes, so as the mayor proton noted, a broader holistic look at traffic safety could come back at a future meeting.
Okay.
All the council can do tonight is take action, or not, or table, or split up regarding interactive speed monitoring signs, native tree planting, and life-extending care of native trees. We're bound by this agenda item. So in the motion that was, is on the table, would pause for now, tabling the traffic safety discussion to return at a future meeting.
All, you can, you can make an amendment to add to my motion, that we do bring back that issue. that issue.
And I would just like to make a substitute motion that would include all of these five recommendations, except the one change where it says on number three, extending care of native trees, and it says on city property. I'd like to change that to in the city. And I'm happy to read all five of these for the motion. Do you need me to do that?
I understand the motion to be the recommendation as stated in the staff report with the one adjustment to item three, that the, the funding granted to CREW for native tree planting and life extending care of native trees to be within the city.
Yes.
And then the rest is stated.
If I could just interject on the, the tree issue specifically. One point of clarification, when the council adopted the budget, the $352,000 for the motor officer was not coming from Measure C. I heard that stated a few times. It was fully from the general fund.
Wait a minute. How do I under?
I know, I thought, I understood it to be the same funding sources, which is why that would be.
No, Measure C, so you have general fund, you have special fund. General fund is your unrestricted money, any governmental purpose. That's where the funding from, for the motor officer was allocated from. The special funds have some type of restriction to them, Measure C being one of those. You have other ones like street tax, just for street resurfacing. That allocation for the motor officer was not coming from there. On our current status of kind of where we are at in Ojai with our public city trees, I'm only talking city trees here now, what you have is you have a $100,000 maintenance contract, which is kind of like a whack-a-mole. It's, it's not adequate for the tree canopy that we have. Really $100,000 is response to limbs down, trees down, critical issues. You do have an on-call arborist if a report's needed about the health or safety of a tree. You also have $200,000 in tree planting. The, the key piece that's underway now that Lindy is working on is she's creating a citywide tree inventory of every city tree, not private, but every city tree. And that's to be critical to getting a really good maintenance contract in place, that you have a GIS map of every city tree. And then typically, once you understand what you have, you break it into districts, and then that's when you go out for that arborist contract. And you say, I mean, it's a four-year agreement, the city's in four districts, five districts, but every year, every tree in that district's getting eyes on it and assessment of its health. And then you can add on things if there's watering that's needed by those, those companies. So I think once Lindy, and she's close, has that kind of baseline inventory in place, we can adequately know what RFP that we need to go out for is to get that level of care that's being talked about tonight.
And as I understood it, isn't it also the case that the staff is embarking on a tree planting project?
Yeah, there's $200,000 in the budget that was adopted for planting trees.
Nice. Okay, I have a, there's a substitute motion. Is there a second for my, the motion?
I have a couple of.
Okay.
So this is new info, this is new information that I didn't have before about the, the funds, about the, about the funds coming from different, different sources.
It would have been good to have a staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you saying we could do both, basically?
Yeah. So, go ahead. So we, you, so you said we can, there's a potential that we could do both, or that the?
Well, I only bring it up for the respect of, of timing, because what I'm hearing from the council, and rightfully so, is we want a higher level of care for our trees, which is totally appropriate. But that's probably not an RFP that's ripe today, but would be soon, once we have the inventory and we could send that out with RFP. We have, you know, you know, 4,000 trees, here they are, here's the types, they're oak, they're, they're that, and we get a more responsive RFP. And then also, the nice tool of having that tree inventory in a GIS system is, once we onboard a contractor, and maybe our existing one or another one, they're actually inventorying every service they do on the tree, the health of the tree, and we have a whole holistic picture of what we're working with, what the needs are.
Thank you. So I, in full disclosure and transparency, I did meet with Tom and Karina and Derek, and, and there, and I was really impressed with the, with the Green Valley Project's movement in, in this. And, and so I would be in favor of having the city manager enter, enter into a, negotiated an agreement, although I'd like to change the grant fund, grant funding to really being a contract, because it's, it's more than a grant. It's really, we're contracting with this, with this, with this organization. And so I would be in favor of supporting the mayor's, seconding the mayor's motion, except for taking item one off, since we are, since this is, so item one being, take away the $350,000 allotment for the motorcycle officer, and, and then moving forward with two through five.
I'll accept that. Okay. So we have a motion, and we have a second on the table.
So I.
Just one second. Councilmember Francina?
I would, I would like to hear both motions again. I mean, no, I don't need to hear this again, but I'm, I'm feeling confused. So where, maybe if you restate your motion, I'll.
Well, I think what I might make is the third motion, but, but I do have, before doing that, I do have a comment, that I don't have the benefit of what the Green Valley Project is. And I shouldn't be voting on something that is talking about, you know, awarding money for a Green Valley Project, and I know zero information. There should be a staff report telling us what the Green Valley Project does. And there should be a staff report that tells us whether CREW should be sole sourced, as opposed to whether we should send this out for an RFP, because I don't know what the alternative sources of doing any of these things are. So I, so my motion is that we have the, that we have the staff bring back a report on our urban forest, including what the Green Valley Project is, including what CREW could potentially do for us, and, and what funds are available to enhance oak tree health in the valley. And that we, that we not address traffic safety in this motion at this time, but we have the city manager bring back, well, I'm going to, actually, I can't, I can't ask for reconsideration of spending money on the traffic cop, so I, so we just bring it back at a future item, subject to a motion by other, other council members who are going to be with us in a couple of weeks and are going to have indicated that they're going to make a motion to have a traffic officer. I don't think we should be spending money on these monitoring devices when that $100,000 could be spent on the traffic officer. So that's my.
So we have a third, a third motion. Is there a second for that motion?
A second. Could you repeat that motion, please? Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I'll repeat it as I understand it, and I'll look to the maker in the secondary to confirm that I've got it captured right. So the motion would be to direct staff to return with a report on the city's trees and urban forest, and available funding and tools to improve the urban forest's health, and table the traffic safety discussion.
Let me ask a question. Are you saying that this, by eliminating one, we're putting aside the same money in case a future council wants to do a traffic officer?
So the motion doesn't spend any money, so it leaves the budget, it directs, other than staff time to prepare the analysis. So it directs the, the staff to return with a report on options for improving the trees, and tables entirely the traffic safety item, subject to the future council doing as they wish. So it leaves all the current budget allocation in place, which the future council could spend, this, with the knowing the adjustments the council could be spent on a traffic officer, could be spent on any other lawful purpose.
Okay, it could be spent on anything related to traffic.
Any lawful purpose.
Any lawful.
Which is not just traffic, any lawful purpose.
Any lawful.
For those funds, which, as noted, as Mr. Alimino noted, the $350,000 allocated out of the general fund, the council could spend that amount on traffic safety, or other goals, or trees, or both, or all of the above, and/or the council could also choose to use some portion of Measure C for this as well.
Do you want to include any money in your motion?
And I understood this motion did not decide to spend any money yet, pending an analysis from staff.
Yeah, no, my, my motion is that the, is that the city manager or his designee is going to come back to us and tell us, this, these are the funds we have available, or you can allocate these funds, here's all the programs we could potentially accept. I'd add to what the city attorney's, you know, summary of my motion, to include specifically a discussion of what the Green Valley Project would do for us, and, and what the pros and cons of doing a sole source contract for CREW.
And the reason I seconded that is that I think it's imperative that we get a full picture of what's going on. Lyn, we just learned that Public Works is doing all of this stuff. Not to have that integrated into, it seems to me to be, well.
Yes.
Not a good idea. I mean, we, if, why have two parallel paths that are eventually going to merge? Why not have them looked at as a holistic, as a holistic issue? And that's part of the thing that, that, you know, once again, process, if we'd had administrative report, we probably would have known this. We should have known this. So anyway, that's one of the reasons why I am voting to sort of have this come back with an administrative report, including all of the things that are happening already that we were unaware of. So.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes, I, I also want to state that, that, that there is a real need for motor safety with bikes, with cars, and so I, you know, I think having a, having us come back with more of a comprehensive approach to, to, to looking at this, that might involve the monitoring signs, that might involve education, e-bike licensing, I would like to.
So if I, if I can interrupt?
Yep, please.
You can make that motion, I cannot, because I was on the losing end of that vote, but you were on the vote to, you know, to approve a different path. You can now propose whatever path you want. And I can accept your amendment or not.
Okay, well, we have a, a motion and a second.
I think she's, I think Rachel is proposing.
You're going to do another one?
Isn't she proposing an amendment?
I'm trying to do a.
Okay, hold, okay, council.
We can do a secondary motion.
Okay, are you going to do a new, you're going to put a new motion on the table?
Can we do one at a time?
Hold on a second, if I could jump in, I think we've lost the track here on the motion. Okay, so the most recent motion would be to simply table the traffic safety item and return with the urban forestry discussion. The idea of spending money for things that are traffic improvements that are not the motorcycle cop cannot be done tonight.
Right.
But I understood this question, to be not about spending money to do traffic stuff that isn't the motor, the motor safety cop, but instead to be direct staff to return with an analysis of all of the traffic safety options. So that could be an amendment to the motion, and then could be proposed and accepted.
Yes, and I would accept that amendment.
Okay.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, I would, I'd like to thank my council members. It doesn't sound as if you're in agreement with my proposal, and I just wanted to say that I think it's really important that we give money to trees and to youth, to empower them, because we are, their world has been destroyed in some forms, and it would be really wonderful to give them some money and some hope to move forward, to do something positive. I've talked to many, many people in our community who do not want a traffic cop, who are very set, dead set against it, so it will be interesting looking, moving forward to see where that goes. I think it was a good, this is a good plan to target speeders, engage people, you know, engage nonprofits in our community, and say yes to education first, and data-driven information, and then use the data to make a decision, rather than just jumping on, you know, a train. And I think we should make this about the trees and the kids, and I'm sad that that council's not willing to do that right now, although I understand where you're coming from, and I hear you. I think we could do both. We can have safety, and we can have trees. On that note, though, we have a motion, and we have a second, so I guess we're ready.
Yeah, just, just to chime in, I have the greatest respect for CREW and the Green Valley Project, and I fully assume that once information about them come back, that they will be part of this project. I have no doubt about that. I just think that we need to put it in there and be official about it. It is a, a local gem, and I don't think anyone that is familiar with the CREW or the Green Valley Project thinks anything else. So it, it's not a matter of not wanting to include them, it's just a matter of broadening the discussion and finding where they truly do fit for the best. So just to, I just wanted to say that, is that they're highly respected, and I actually love them, and I know the nonprofit, so I, I don't see them as not being part of this, just to say, I can't commit, though.
And if I could also add that, that I, well, just want to second what Councilmember Rule said, I think that this isn't us going in a different direction. I think this is going, us going in the direction that is, that is proposed here, but in a way that gives us time and more information. That's, that's why I'm going to be supporting this, because I really did support this plan, and, and I, and I, I really want us to, to engage with CREW for the kids, for the trees, and for what's, what's possible for, for our climate mitigation.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a roll call?
I'm not ever going to be ready.
Do you have a final comment, councilwoman?
I'm losing my, my train of thought.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor, ready for the roll call.
We're not, we're not, by, by dividing it up, we're not necessarily voting for the traffic officer, that's still part of the.
It's a different vote.
That would come in the future.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We're not voting for or against any of that.
Correct. It's voting to return with an analysis of options, which could include the motor deputy, but also other traffic safety improvements.
So you're, Andy's motion is first, right?
Yes.
So I can restate, yeah, his motion, the last motion was voted first.
The last one I did that Rachel added on.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Rule.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to councilmember reports. Anyone have anything to report?
Yeah, I do. But. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
So I think this is about three weeks ago, Ventura Regional Sanitation District, which I'm a board member, took us on a field trip to the Tolan landfill. They are in the last expansion of Tolan landfill, so we watched them rolling out all the liners that are going to hopefully, you know, contain. But what was really kind of eye-opening, shocking, was the massive size. So they told us it's going to be full in 13 years, and we're down, and, you know, where the landfill's going to go is, you know, way up. And it's just mind-boggling how much money, or, excuse me, how much stuff we, as most of Western Ventura County, are sending to be buried, and. to be buried, and the 13 years is going to come quicker than anyone knows, and we should do everything we can to reduce what we send to the landfill, and we should be prepared for them having to site a new landfill, and hopefully they don't target OHI again, like they did. Now, I don't-
Oh, God.
If you've been here for any period of time, before there was Tolan, there, there was Weldon Canyon, which was going to be right at the mouth of the valley, and, you know, we were able to avoid it, but they're going to have to find another spot, and so that's, yeah, that's my report.
Okay, anyone else, councilmember?
I, yes, I have some good news to report. I sit on the board for the Gold Coast Transit District, and we just received a grant from Biden's Infrastructure Act to, to purchase hydrogen fuel cell buses and infrastructure. And, and so that is something that's going to be released. They're zero emissions, clean energy buses, and I'm sure anybody who's ever waited outside of a bus, a bus stop will appreciate having clean energy vehicles. And, and so I just wanted to, to report, that news came just as the fires were starting in Camarillo, and we wa, we, we went from this good news out to the red skies. So, so a little bit of, of bright news in, in, in otherwise, you know, very difficult time.
So just a question on that, did they have anything to say about when those buses will be available?
That, that is, I don't remember, but I will let you know at the next meeting, and, but it's soon. It's, 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 it's very soon. Yeah, and, and their, their overall goals are being completely emissions-free by 2040. So that is, that is something that we're aggressively working toward.
Anyone else? Yep.
We're kind of mixing up-
Well, we're still on a council member report.
Not future, yes.
No.
No.
Okay, any city manager report?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to state that since you met our new transit supervisor, Anthony, when he was sworn in at a recent meeting, we filled our last vacancy of trolley driver who just started this last week, and Gold Coast Transit's been kind enough to provide their training programs to us, so he's getting his requisite training hours in the safety program, and will be fully staffed in that realm. On that same night, the council also approved a purchase of a new electric trolley, so we're also moving towards being fully electric.
Great news, thank you.
And then just a reminder, we have a special meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, 6:00 PM, as I'm sure you're all well aware of.
Yes, we are. Okay, future agenda items?
I have one. I, I would like to put on the adopting a, a program of drone versus fireworks. I think the bombs bursting in air has, has played its, has played out, and drones can tell a story, I mean, it's just fabulous. So I would like to move towards that. There is support for that in the community, there is the petition, there is the website, all of us who have animals, who have, anyway, everybody gets the idea, so I would, thank you.
I've been working on that for a long time, and I told them, wait till January, but they couldn't wait. So, yeah.
Any other future agenda items? Nope.
I'd like to, I'd like to put fire, fire hardening on the agenda, and, and like more of an educational, to, to look at education options and communication options for the community on what they can do to protect their homes, and, and what we can do in the city to, to reduce our, our risk of fire.
So a presentation?
Yes.
I would second getting that on.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Can we do the evacuation study? Michelle Thomas?
Well, we are looking at a future newsletter article, given the time of year, on all the things that you can do at home, both in terms of being ready for an evacuation and being more fire-safe with your property as well.
Question on that, is there going to be like a cutout section that people can have, and like a, like numbers and information and evacuation information?
So as always, we encourage people to register with BC Alert. Just to be very clear, in, in evacuation scenario, there are pre-designated evacuation locations, but there's never going to be a prescribed, because I hear this often, that people want this, that in the event of a disaster, you go to point A, because we don't know where the hazard may be. If there's a hazmat spill near Nordoff, and you're near Nordoff, we aren't going to send you to Nordoff. So a pre-designated place to go, that's not going to exist. There may be places to go and routes to get there, but that's why you want to be registered with BC Alert, because they'll tell you where to go and how to get there.
There was some of that, that spoke about the post, that the city should speak with the post office about secure mailboxes? What was that? Was that Andrew Stat?
Yes.
Yeah, it was Andrew. Yeah.
Yeah, check, probably. You can always, obviously, get a P.O. box.
I have a P.O. box.
A lock box.
I'm just asking, I, I didn't know there was such-
But I, I've not known the post office to install at no cost, lockable mailboxes. That's something a property owner can do.
I don't think he's talking about that.
I think he's talking about the blue boxes.
Oh, I understood it as the personal ones.
Yeah, no, you can reach in and get the, get things out.
Perhaps we could have this, the city manager consult with the post off, the postmaster?
Yeah.
Buddy?
For now.
Okay, all right, well, thank you all for a very civil, respectful, and efficient meeting, and we are adjourned.